Good evening, council. We're reconvening the meeting from February 11th on this evening of February the 16th. Just to make sure we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on, although some of you have indicated that you may be on and off video, but please stay in contact with the clerk so we can make sure we maintain quorum. This meeting is convened at our electronic means under Ministerial Order M192, and so everybody is participating remotely. Only council should have their video enabled. This is a new part of the script. Any staff or applicant should disable their video. This is to make sure that no one's at an advantage during this quasi judicial hearing. And if I see folks with videos enabled, I will make sure to just to pause the proceedings while they're turned off. If connections are lost during any time through this meeting, we'll recess until the connection is restored. And to ensure quorum is maintained, please let the clerk know if you're leaving. The live stream of this meeting has both audio and video. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. You can follow all of this on live stream and the YouTube link, which is tweeted out on the handle @Vancityclerk. @Vancityclerk. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers. Lastly, following the updated guidance on February 5th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted on the provincial health order. Therefore, speakers commenting the council will be doing so by phone. And with that, clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. You were in the chair. Deputy Mayor Carr?
Here.
And Counselor DeGenova?
Present.
Counselor Frye?
Here.
Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weeb?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Dominado?
Present.
Counselor Bly?
Present.
And Counselor Kirby Young? The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart. Mayor Stewart, I think you're on mute.
First time ever. Okay. Thanks very much. We acknowledge, of course, that we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wautuths, and had a delightful conversation today with Kristin Rivers, the co-chair of the Squamish Nation. Thank them so much for having care for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff, including our great clerks who work hard every day to help make sure our city is an incredible place to live, work, and play. In terms of this evening, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @Vancityclerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn. Any comments can be submitted on the online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments. And that link is also tweeted out. Finally, speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, so to navigate through your slides, just say next. Our role tonight is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, which should save debate for after the close of speakers, and I'll try to gently steer people towards that objective. After hearing from speakers, council may approve and principal the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So we're moving to item two on this reconvened meeting, which is 1015 East Hastings Street. As a reminder, council received the presentation from staff on February 11th, and we are moving to hear from the applicant. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes, we are.
Great. Okay. Did you have a presentation or is it just verbal?
It's verbal.
Great. Okay. Please go ahead.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Kayla Schramm. I am the Director of Projects and Planning with McCullough Development Services, and we are the development consultant on this project representing the interests of both Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre and BC Housing. I would like to start off by acknowledging the unceded and traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. Susan Tatush of the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society and James Forsyth of BC Housing have prepared a few comments on our overarching vision and the need for this project. They will stay on to answer questions along with myself and Chris Rowe, the project architect. I would now like to hand things over to Susan Tatush, the Executive Director of the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre.
Good evening. I would like to acknowledge that we work and live in the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. And Susan Tatush, I have been the executive director of the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre. I'm
Sorry, I'm just, I'm sorry, Ms. Tatush. I'm just going to interrupt you for a second because you are a little faint. So if you could perhaps speak a little closer to your microphone or into your phone receiver, that would be great.
Okay. Why did you lose me?
Pardon me?
Do I start all over again with the timing?
I think we heard a bit of the first bit, but you can just continue on. That's fine.
Okay. So I am pleased to be here at this important milestone.
Quite a privilege, Mr. Mayor. The speaker's still very faint.
Okay. Is there, is there an ability to speak a little closer into your, into your phone?
Yes. When I did the sound test, it said it was good.
It sounds a little better. You, you sound like maybe you're a little closer to the microphone.
Okay. Shall we try it now?
Oh, that's so much better. Yes.
Good.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead. You can start from the beginning again if that makes you more comfortable.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I would like to acknowledge that we work and live in the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. I'm Susan Tatush. I have been the Executive Director of the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society for the past 15 years. The society is located at 1607 East Hastings Street and was incorporated in 1963. I am pleased to be here at this important milestone and would like to take a moment to share the story of the 1015 East Hastings Street project and why we are asking for your support for our proposal. As you are aware, the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society has been operating the shelter at 201 Central since 2009. While set up as an emergency shelter facility, unwavering demand has required that shelter remain open 24/7, 365 days per year since its opening. The city warehouse at 201 Central has been seeing better days, and we have been advocating for over 10 years now for a new purpose-built shelter and homes that will serve the needs of urban indigenous peoples. In 2015, the City of Vancouver specifically identified this project as one of the key actions to respond to Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council's housing and wellness strategy, which called for increased access and diversity of housing options. This is your opportunity to fall through on that commitment. Members of our community continue to make up a significant number of the homeless counts within the City of Vancouver, and this whole project is working to be part of the solution to this increasingly dire situation. By creating a culturally safe and welcoming space, Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Society is responding to a need for a shelter operated by and for urban indigenous peoples. The Friendship Centre's vision is to provide an inclusive and supportive space that allows individuals to stabilize. Currently, over 75% of shelter guests are over 55 years of age, and we anticipate a similar makeup in the new facility at 1015 East Hastings. Access to elders, programming, and supports in the new development will allow shelter guests to embrace culture and traditional practices. Many current shelter guests work through temporary employment agencies. They wake up at 5:00 AM, have breakfast, have a sandwich, and snack to take with them for lunch, and go and stand in line to get a laborer's job for the day. In the face of a history
Can't hear a word.
No, I can't.
Leave the, leave the light on.
I'm hearing a bit of interference there. We, we are able to hear you, but it does sound like there are voices in the background.
It's not from ours.
Okay. I could just ask everybody else to mute while we're listening to Ms. Tatush. Please continue.
Thank you. In the face of a history of colonization and ongoing systemic discrimination against indigenous peoples, the prominent location of this development gives us an opportunity to contribute to indigenous placemaking. This building will give visual and physical expression to the strong and enduring legacy of indigenous peoples, directly complementing the downtown east side plan of an indigenous village, where indigenous residents could use traditional healing practices, ceremonies, and other activities. The new homes and shelter plan for 1015 East Hastings are an important opportunity to create a safe space where people from all walks of life can come together and feel accepted and valued. This is an incredibly important part of the success of 201 Central. The individuals, individuals currently accessing the shelter are a community. By providing a range of housing options, this community can continue to grow and support each other on their own housing journey. This building and spaces are being designed to reflect the values of inclusiveness and sharing, which are at the heart of the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society, and will celebrate the area's rich and vibrant indigenous history and culture. We look forward to the future and to the day when residents will walk through the door to their new homes. Neighbors will connect to each other through community events and gatherings, and people from all cultural backgrounds will be welcome to proudly express their culture. Thank you, Cookstown.
Thank you so much for your input. And there were other speakers from the applicant team?
Thanks very much, Your Worship. Good evening, members of the public, city staff, councillors. I am James Forsyth, the Director of Regional Development at BC Housing. We're gathered this evening digitally, but we're all located on the traditional ancestral territories of many First Nations. I am grateful to have the opportunity to work and live in these territories and the benefits that these lands brought us. 1015 East Hastings is a partnership between the City of Vancouver, BC Housing, and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society. We're partnering to build a range of housing options for people of all ages who are struggling to find a place to call home. The project is in direct alignment with Vancouver's housing strategy, their three-year action plan, and the local area plan. 1015 is funded through the provincial Building BC Initiative that will provide over 20,000 homes across the province in 10 years, and is receiving capital and operating funding from BC Housing's Supportive Housing Fund, and utilizes a spectrum of rents to create broad affordability. We recognize that there are too many people who are experiencing homelessness or are at risk of homelessness from our indigenous communities. We see this in the homeless counts and other reporting. As Susan noted, this project is taking direct action to help to address these challenges. The project also presents diversity of housing and touches many points across the housing continuum. There's the shelter, transitional housing, non-market housing, and rental housing. 1015 is an indigenous-led mixed development that will support a diverse and inclusive community of belonging. Finally, and most importantly, the project celebrates opportunities for reconciliation. Through the architecture, the design, and the programming, the building will celebrate the area's indigenous history and traditions. It will honor and respect the elders, adults, youth, and family that live in the area. 1015 is by indigenous for indigenous, and it will contribute, enrich, and enhance the local community. I want to acknowledge all the hard work from city staff, our consultants and construction team, and especially the Friendship Centre for bringing this project to public hearing this evening. Thank you.
Anybody else there? Anybody else on the applicant team?
Nope. That's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, council, this is your chance to ask questions to the applicant or to staff. So before we move to speakers, Counselor Frye, I've got you up first, followed by Counselor Swanson, Kirby Young, and Hardwick. Counselor Frye, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Yeah. I'm curious why the location of the shelter and supportive housing and the social housing were put on the west side and the market on the east side?
It'll be the applicant, I guess?
Sure. Thank you for that question. Chris, can I hand this one over to you?
Certainly, Kayla. Christopher Rowe, speaking for Low Hammond Row Architects and the project team. The main reason was because of the relative proportion of the market housing and the affordable housing is one-thirds, two-thirds, and the, the way the site is shaped, I guess, kind of led us to put the largest piece of housing where we have the largest frontages, which are the south elevation and the north elevation. So it's really just a question of fit on this. It's really a rather challenging small site.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that it's not because it's facing the rail line, the broad inlet line there. I'm curious what specific factors you've identified around the proximity to the rail line for the folks who will be living in the social housing and the shelter and supportive housing, and if there's been work to mitigate that as far as obviously noise and vibrations, including the signal crossing that we know is an ongoing and persistent problem, but also things like diesel particulate matter and, and that sort of air pollution.
Kayla, shall I carry on?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, there's a, besides the noise, particulate matter, and the vibe, there's the vibration. There's also the safety factor. All of those are dealt with fairly comprehensively. We've been working since the beginning with consultants on assessing the noise and vibration. We arranged the building to minimize its frontage on the rail line. That's why it has that, that L-shaped configuration with the smallest elevation facing the, the west and the rail line. The building envelope and the windows will be specified to minimize sound transmission. And there are a minimal number of windows facing that, that western side. One of the benefits of the building's energy-efficient ventilation system is that it delivers 100% fresh air from the rooftop to all units. 100% of the time, it's effectively the same as a passive ventilation system. So in times of high pollution or high noise, there's no particular reason for residents to have to open their windows to have a high-quality indoor air environment. Like, those are the main, the main reasons, the main effects. Thank you.
So, so, so this is different from your typical application insofar as you're being especially proactive around mitigating the impacts of, of the rail proximity?
Absolutely. It's been essential in the design to take that into account. It's one of the big, that along with the high traffic along Hastings is, they're both significant factors on livability. And that's one of the reasons why the building is set as far away as possible from, from Hastings, as well as minimizing its frontage on the rail line.
Okay. I'm, I'm, thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, thanks. I've got three questions for the applicant. Is it going to be a pet-friendly building?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I have this up on my wall. Every rezoning asks about pets, so. The second is, I think I heard you say that one-third is at shelter, one-third is hills, and one-third at low end of market. Is that right?
That is correct.
Are you going to try and get more at shelter? Try to get more funding so you can have more at shelter?
That is a good question. We are focused on making the overall financial viability of this project work, and there are a variety of components, including the fully funded shelter and the supports connected to a number of those units. So we are committing to that third, a third, a third.
Okay. And then the last question is, what kind of shelter is it going to be? Is it going to be like pads on the mattresses on the floor or pods or?
Yes.
24 hours? Will you have to line up to get in, in the afternoon? That kind of thing?
Yeah. Those are great questions. So they will be in pods. There will be sections for men and sections for, for women, and there will also be a protected section for individuals who do not feel comfortable in either of those spaces. The shelter will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for a stay of up to 90 days. So there will not be a daily lineup.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's good.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions for staff, if I can, and it's maybe an unpopular question given how much we have a need for social housing, but I see that the application is to rezone from M1 Industrial to CD1 comprehensive. And given, I have to ask this question, given the fact that I'm the City of Vancouver rep on the Metro Vancouver Industrial Lands Task Force, which, and that strategy has been completed and really, really underlines the dire need for more industrial space. And, you know, at the base levels, as if we do nothing else, we cannot take industrial land out of our existing inventory. In fact, we need to figure out ways to intensify and grow it. So my question is, why are we rezoning industrial and why are we not activating these industrial lands that we have in the city more fully versus using it for housing when it's already on a busy arterial and near a rail line?
Evening, Mayor and councillors. It's Tom Wanklin, Senior Planner for Downtown East Side. I can respond to that question. The former council in the late 1990s resolved to make the industrial strip along Hastings from Heathley to Clark as let go from industrial to be available for rezoning to housing purposes. They also adopted a let go in a part of Kiwasa, which is just situated to the south of Hastings as well.
Was there any thought? Just because I have limited time, and I appreciate the answer. Was there any thought in the last 25 years or so, given the sort of dire shortage of industrial, to revisit that?
It was re, it, councillor
Benefits of putting housing on arterials or near rail lines?
The revisiting took place in the preparation of the Downtown East Side Plan, which was from, in the period 2012 to 2014, and subsequently approved by council at that time. In terms of the housing shortages, it, and the housing plan for Downtown East Side, it was resolved that it was necessary to achieve as much housing as possible because of the shortage of housing and homelessness.
Were there any mitigating steps taken at that time to do sort of a one-for-one, or when this strip was designated from industrial for housing or that intention was made, to allocate other land for industrial to compensate?
What, what was done, what was done is we then embarked on the flats, the Falls Creek Flats Plan, which has markedly permitted development to intensify industry and to create more job, 30,000 estimated job opportunities in the Falls Creek Flats.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm moving on to a different question. You mentioned the Downtown East Side Plan, and under the depth, it says, you know, with consideration projects like this for social housing, you can intensify the FSR and the height. Says up to 150 feet and seven FSR. I know this is within the intended increase in FSR under the plan, that's 6.9, but the height is 167 feet. I believe that they're at 156 in the front from Hastings, but the depth of the plan says up to 150. Can you comment on that?
Yes. In terms of council's approved Vancouver, Housing Vancouver Strategy Action Plan, a modest increase in height for the delivery of social housing was required of all community plans, including the Downtown East Side Plan. And we, we took into account that this particular application brings so many benefits to the indigenous population around a wide choice of housing options and social enterprise and space for shelter. So in, in response to that, we support the modest increase in height.
Okay. Thanks. That's helpful. And, and in terms of, can you comment? How many will be, people, folks, are you able to identify this point, be relocated from other services? How many of these are really net new housing units?
I will have to ask our housing colleagues on the call to respond to that. Thank you.
Hi. It's Celine Mobles here, Managing Director of Homelessness Services and Affordable Housing Programs. I, I think this is, this is new housing being created in the community, but it will serve as a replacement for the 201 Central Shelter that Susan Tatush was speaking to, which has been in operation as a temporary shelter for a very long time and is, the building is at the end of its life. So this will be a fantastic new location for the replacement of that shelter.
Okay. Thanks. How many beds at that 201, please?
I, I'll defer to Susan. I think it's 80. Maybe Susan might be able to better speak to that. Oh, it's 100. I've just had a little text.
Okay. Thanks. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
A number, pardon me, a number of my questions have already been asked, but I, I just wanted, on, on top of Counselor Frye's question about the rail line, do we know what materials are being shipped on that line? You know, what type of goods are being shipped along there? Anybody?
Hi. It's Marcel from rezoning. Sorry, we don't, we don't have that information.
That's just because of proximity, that would be important for us to know. If I was reading it right, do we have segregated bike storage and elevators and doors in this development, or am I reading that wrong? Two different.
I can ask Lisa from ACCS to respond to that. Thanks.
Hi there. This is Lisa Jimenez with ACCS. There are, the market component does have a, a separate door on Glen Drive, and the, the shelter, the supportive housing units, and the social housing units, actually, the shelter and the non-supportive housing units have one door, and the social housing units have another door, and then the social enterprise has another door. So there's lots of doors.
What about the bike storage and the elevator components?
I'm going to ask Chris to confirm that for us. Chris?
Thanks, Lisa. The, the primary reason for the separation of the market and the affordable components was, as I understand it, so that the market housing could be separated out as a separate strata lot and used to provide capital support for the entire project. So for that reason, it has its own standalone circulation, parking, and electrical and mechanical systems. It's not an attempt to, I mean, that's the, the primary reason those two things, the two tenures are separated. tenures are separated.
Because of the strata nature? So the land tenure? I'm sorry, I'm not quite getting it.
It, it's so that, and perhaps Mr Forsyth from BC Housing could elaborate. But as I understand it, it is to be able to generate as much income to support the project through the market.
No, Chris, sorry. Let me just, I'm just going to hop in. Sorry. It's Kayla. So there are separate entrances for all of the different components of the building. There will be different operators for both the market and the non-market components. But that is to allow for those building management fees and the shared expenses to remain as low as possible. Nonprofit housing management does require specialized knowledge and an approach. By separating these spaces out, we are able to manage costs independently that allows for the nonprofit operator to control materials and finishings. So choosing something more durable and long-lasting. And this approach limits the amount of cost sharing and maintenance related to the common spaces, which really makes it easier to maintain that space over the long term, which keeps that social housing as affordable as possible for the tenants.
Are there insurance implications?
Kayla, if you'd like, I can jump in on that. And so with the, the circulation, that sort of stuff, it's something that BC Housing is incredibly sensitive to and aware of. In terms of insurance implications for the entire building, BC Housing, we have the ability to actually self-insure. But in terms of those operating costs, it is something that, you know, there, that it is best to be able to split those out.
Okay, so we're, we're segmenting by operator within the overall facility into, I think I heard four different, four different sections or four different operators. Did I get it?
Not quite four different operators, but, but yeah, there's, it's, it's a very, very mixed use development.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand doors, elevators, parking, bike set, just the, the purpose behind it. And I think what I hear is that it's financial because you're segmenting these things and they have their own internal financial rationale.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's, that's five. Thanks. Councillor Wee, up to five minutes.
Yeah, my first question would be on the Day Centre. If we get a little more information about how that will operate and just the square footage of the Day Centre. And do we see this as a smaller navigation centre for the disproportionate amount of Indigenous homeless we have in Vancouver?
Thank you for that question. So that centre and that space will provide a variety of programming opportunities, including onsite training, education, and health and wellness services and gathering spaces. There will also be cultural supports and programming and larger community events. We do have a larger conference room where, that the Friendship Centre has a vision of being able to offer either through a nominal rent or, or to community partners for meetings throughout the day. So it is, a lot of the programming will be targeted towards the shelter and supportive housing residents, but there will be an opportunity for the larger community to access some of that space.
Okay, and to build on that, the, so Day Centre will be utilized. Yeah, okay, that's, I mean, that's my main question. I'm really appreciative of the Day Centre. Yeah, I'll, I'll step back.
Thanks, councillor Dominado, up to five.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And I'll just pick up where councillor Wee left off, because I actually had a question around the Day Centre as well. Is it, would it be fair to characterize that the, in, with all the services and the meals, this sort of could be a bit of a drop-in center space for people to come and congregate and, and gather?
There will be opportunities for gathering, yes. However, there will be a safety component to the shelter guests who are there for that ninety-day stay. So it will be specifically programmed. So individuals will be accessing a specific activity or, or event.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I guess also to the applicant is around the, you've got the, the shelter spaces and then you have the twenty-five homes with supportive services. Is the intent there is to enable individuals who are in the shelter and the temporary shelter to transition into more permanent housing? Is that sort of the, the vision?
Yes, absolutely. The supportive units are going to be available to prioritize individuals in the shelter, to help stabilize. And the idea is to create a community, and then the non-market units that are available are also on that site to allow that community to build and grow, and individuals to, to stay in a community they feel safe and welcome.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then a question to staff, and I'm not sure if you'll be able to actually answer this, given we're in public. But in the context of the feedback you received around the lack of green space in parks, and I recognize we did acknowledge other neighboring parks. But I'm curious if we are looking at the city and/or the park board of acquiring any additional lands. And again, you might not be able to answer that specifically, but if that is a consideration, maybe broadly, because there is a, a lack of, of parks in that area. I walk that area quite a bit. So I'm just curious if that's something that's contemplated.
Councillor Tom Wanklin speaking, Senior Planner Downtown Eastside. I can mention that from the side of parks and recreation, they have been doing a whole lot of investigations into the availability of property for parks purposes. And that's an ongoing project on their side.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then my last question, and I'm not sure if this is the applicant or staff, but is around the courtyard being on the west side of the development? And whether there's consideration to it being on the east side, again, away from the rail lines?
Hi, this is Marcel from rezoning. So the courtyard abuts, well, it fronts Hastings Street, so that courtyard is for, specifically for the shelter residents. And then there's, there's the potential along that rail side there for, for additional amenity space. But, well, we'll have to look at that and further at the DP stage. But there, the main courtyard would be for what is facing Hastings there.
Okay, thank you. I'll pause there.
Thanks so much, councillor Wee. You've got about two and a half minutes left.
Perfect. Yeah, the question I have is on Indigenous wellbeing. And recognizing the report, it talks about creating culturally safe spaces. And I know this council is looking to see how we can decolonize our spaces. I'm just wondering, how do you see this building doing that? And how can we make sure that we're also looking at the neighboring area to ensure that this building can be incorporated into the community?
Thank you for that question. I think that there's a variety of ways in which this space can be welcoming, welcoming and inclusive. I think some of the physical components of how the space is designed absolutely fits in. There will be an opportunity for art and for there to be sort of a distinctive nature on the exterior of this building. I think the spaces within the building will also create an open and inclusive sort of area. So for example, that front courtyard, there is an opportunity to open up that space and have gatherings that could include the larger community. They could be cultural gatherings or other sort of community-based events. In addition, I think it also has to do with the types of programming and support the staff that are on site, the way that individuals are treated. It's around making sure that that space is open and safe and inclusive, and everybody is treated with respect. And I think that that will be a key component as well.
And then last question, recognizing the demand for spaces like this, I guess maybe with BC Housing and other partners, are we, do we think this size is large enough? Or are we looking, so how do we come up to the size of space that we're looking for in this project? I guess would be my question, recognizing the high need of demand.
Thank you very much for the, the question. So as I mentioned, the, the product is funded through our Supportive Housing Fund. And so unfortunately, it, it isn't one of the largest programs that BC Housing has. So to be able to, to allocate funding from that program to this project is, is really great to see. In terms of the, the size, we were looking at, you know, the, the existing shelter. And then also the society's operations management plan. Because the key for this product to be successful is for the society to, to have a, a really, really good handle on operations and their objectives. So it was a collaborative process to understand, you know, what they, they felt is, is kind of the appropriate size. And, and that then informed the design from there.
Thanks. The context is helpful.
Thanks, council. That's it for questions. So now we're going to move to hear from the public. Anybody who wants to talk to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610. Participant code 93417, hashtag get on the list, and that's on Twitter if you need that information. We do have a number of speakers on the line, so I'm going to start with speaker number one. Mark White from the Seniors Advisory Committee. Mr. White, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, councillors and staff. As mentioned, I'm Mark White, the Chair of the Seniors Advisory Committee and the Housing Subcommittee. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee, and I'm a resident in Vancouver. SAC is speaking strongly in favor of this rezoning application. There's a significant gap of affordable housing that caters to the real incomes of seniors living in all neighborhoods across the city. And it's important to recognize that seniors, elders are at the highest risk and fastest-growing demographics of people who are facing homelessness in the city. However, the gap in affordable housing shelters and provisions of programs and services for Indigenous seniors and elders is desperately needed. And there's also a need for effective, community-run and culturally appropriate transition programs, assisting guests transition from shelters to supportive housing to independent living, including employment. In speaking with Kayla Schram from the Michaela Development Services, and she mentioned today as well, that seventy-five percent of the current guests at the shelter at the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre at sixteen oh seven are seniors, are elders over fifty-five years. And, and that they anticipate a similar demographic profile at the ten fifteen site. I think a unique quality of the planning process for this development is the recognition that we're not solely addressing the need for shelters and affordable housing. But there's a need to create safe, healthy, food-secure, and culturally engaged communities. And once again, including employment opportunities. And I understand the proposed plan includes a space for some social enterprise and amenities. We're also aware that the Friendship Centre has a strong elders committee and elders programming that will draw on to support shelter guests as they stabilize and move into supportive or independent affordable housing, also available on the proposed site. But I also want to mention that this site is one of a number of developments. And so I see this, although we're speaking of it for this evening, at this particular site, I think we have to see it as a network. And I welcome the strong vision, mission, and proven track record of the small but growing number of nonprofit developers focused on building real, intergenerational, mixed communities to better serve the growing number of Indigenous seniors and elders in the community. In the spirit of reconciliation, we hope that city planners involved with the Vancouver Plan have included these visionary leaders and nonprofit developers in creating a new vision and strategy under the Vancouver Plan that is supportive of all its residents. We thank city staff for their recommendation to rezone ten fifteen East Hastings Street. And SAC strongly supports their recommendation to rezone from M1 to CD1 in the spirit of reconciliation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in today. I, I don't hear a, I don't see anybody on the list for questions for you. So I am going to move on to the next speaker, but thanks for participating tonight and all the work you do for the city. Thanks so much. The second speaker, individual is William Azarov from Brightside Community Homes. Mr. Azarov?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Well, it's my great privilege to speak in support of this project tonight. And so I want to sort of cover two basic areas of my support. One is, in my official capacity as CEO of Brightside Community Homes Foundation, you know, the, the proponents of this project are, are just well-regarded peers in the sector. The Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society is well-respected and excellent not-for-profit and operator, providing essential services. And to see them be able to expand their services in these ways is excellent. As councillor Fry mentioned at the first part of the hearing last week, McCollough, who's involved with this project, is just an amazing not-for-profit housing provider and developer of Indigenous projects, and well-respected, and of course, BC Housing is as well. And I just think the innovative nature of this project, where you have so many different types of housing together, where people could kind of move between the housing as they might, need less supports over time, is inspiring and, and important. So, you know, we support this project strongly. And the second thing I just want to say is, as more of a resident of Vancouver, I live in Strathcona. I live six blocks away from where this proposed redevelopment is. And I welcome this project into my neighborhood, and I welcome the residents who will live there into my neighborhood as well. I think that the neighborhood, as, as you all well know, has seen a lot of challenges over the last several months. And I think, I can imagine some neighbors are a bit nervous, but this is the kind of solution we need more of. If we have, if we'd had more of these solutions being built over the last twenty years, we may not be in the situation we're in today. So to be a resident of Strathcona and oppose this project is something I, I don't understand. I wholeheartedly support it, wearing both my personal and my professional hats. So that's, that's what I wanted to say tonight.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions from councillors, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. But thanks so much for calling in tonight. I've got Nathan Hawkins next.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nathan Hawkins. I live in Vancouver. I'm a renter in Vancouver, and I'm twenty-seven years old. I am here to speak absolutely in favor of this project. I am extremely in favor of building more housing of any kind in Vancouver, especially in favor of rental, non-market housing and transitional housing. And I've also been heavily involved in volunteering at the Downtown Eastside for probably half my life and see firsthand how desperately the city needs more shelter space. So I'm, I'm really in favor of seeing these different types of housing combined in one development. Not only does it give the opportunity for certain people to reach different income thresholds and kind of stay living in the, you know, the same building, the same area, but it's also so positive in terms of outcomes when you mix people of different income groups together. It's one of the strongest actions that you can take in order to help alleviate homelessness and poverty. The fact that they're having a built-in social enterprise space is awesome. I've seen that a lot of the Downtown Eastside nonprofits have had really great success with that, helping people start their own businesses and giving them that freedom. And I like that the project has a lower parking requirement because having whatever, one parking space per every unit is just ridiculous. It's unused, and it adds so much cost to the project. So allowing these lower parking spaces, you know, really helps make the project more financially feasible. If it was me, I would be in favor of, you know, another twenty stories in this development. But I'm perfectly happy to speak out in support of it, as is. And I also want to speak just more generally, based on all of the proposals that came during this public hearing, the one last week, and then this one and the one that we'll hear about after. about after, I would really be in support of Vancouver changing the way they process some of these building permits, or development permits, or rezonings, to make it not so laborious, you know, having years and years of consultation and all these revisions and whatnot. I think a lot of this stuff could be handled more by city planning staff and, you know, fast-track all of this so we can get more houses built, because we're just in such a dire need in the city to have more housing of any kind, and especially more affordable housing. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you so much. And I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Just one second, counsel. Okay, there you go. We have Liam Griffin, speaker number three, Liam Griffin.
Hi there, H S, you can hear me?
I can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Alrighty, I'm Liam Griffin, and I am a resident of Vancouver, and I just want to express my full support for this project. I currently rent a home next to the project site and live in a great community of renters, homeowners, and commercial tenants. And I've been involved in the Strathcona community since the eighties through nearby community cultural organizations. I walk the neighborhood often to get outside during this pandemic that we're all experiencing. I feel very strongly that Strathcona is precisely the right location for this project. Being close to one's existing community is as important now as ever, and the stability provided to being able to remain near social supports is a key social determinant of health. The proximity to many community amenities, services, and public transit is also an important factor in ensuring residents of all socioeconomic backgrounds can thrive. For me, the parts of this project that resonate most are the fact that it provides an opportunity for meaningful indigenous placemaking and the incorporation of a well-planned and desperately needed shelter. The Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society has long been a core of support for many in the community, and their leadership ensures the project will honor and respect the elders, youth, adults, and families living in this neighborhood. Equally inspiring for me is the level of planning and accounting for lived experience in the shelter aspect of the site. Safe shelter can be an access point for those that are ready for more stable, permanent housing, and the fact that the project incorporates both transitional housing and subsidized social housing means those in the community that are in need of safe and secure homes have the prospect of a linear path toward a permanent home in the community where they are most supported. At the end of the day, the most vibrant and diverse neighborhoods include a wide range of housing, a philosophy that is built into the downtown east side plan, which calls for a variety of housing options. This is made financially feasible by incorporating a social enterprise space as well as market-rate rental homes. This project really is the full package. I personally feel safe in my community, and I am confident that this project would strengthen the vibrance and resilience of the neighborhood. More importantly, it would in fact play a critical role in mitigating many of the concerns of neighbors while providing shelter and homes for those in most need. Thank you, Mayor and council, for your time.
Thank you for your time. I don't see any questions for you, so thanks for participating tonight, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have speaker number four, who's Jill Atkey.
Hi there, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jill Atkey, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of B C Nonprofit Housing Association to support the rezoning brought forward by Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society and B C Housing. I mentioned to you last week that our offices are located at Burst and Commercial, and I also live at the intersection of Grandview Woodland, Hastings Sunrise, and Renfrew Heights, so I know, I know the area very well. I spoke to important key data points during my presentation last week, which highlighted the importance of indigenous-focused housing units in east Vancouver, and this makes this project an ideal fit in the neighborhood. We also know, as councillor, we mentioned earlier, that indigenous people in Vancouver are overrepresented amongst those experiencing homelessness, and the shelter would assist in providing support and a safe place to stay until housing can be secured. Having a shelter, supportive housing, affordable, and market rental housing on one site will allow the Friendship Centre to provide housing options across a really significant part of the continuum as people's circumstances and needs change, which helps with transitioning people from shelter to housing with support to independent housing as they stabilize from their experiences with homelessness. The Aboriginal Friendship Centre is a long-established community organization and really a bedrock of support for many in the community. And we know that with the integration of housing with the Friendship Centre, that this will provide substantial benefits for anyone living in the building. Finally, one of the unique features of this application that I really like is the inclusion of a social enterprise space. With the approval of the rezoning, the Friendship Centre would be able to provide culturally-appropriate enterprise and services, and over time earn revenue to reinvest back into their operations or to even use in future housing developments. So that's something that I think is really unique to this, this site and this proposal. And I think just finally, Susan Tattouche said it best when she emphasized the importance of indigenous placemaking as an act of decolonization, and that's what's so important about this project. The project, as you know, has been a long time in the making, and we strongly urge city council to move forward with the project and approve the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for your time tonight, as always, and we don't see any questions on the queue for you, so I just want to thank you so much and move on to the, move on to the next speaker. Thank you. Okay, we've got speaker number five, Stephanie Fernhorst.
Hello?
Hi there, you've got up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. My name's Stephanie Fernhorst, I'm a resident of the Strathcona Village condo development right next door, directly beside ten fifteen Hastings, where the proposed development site is. And on the line with me are two other residents of the building, and we are here representing the Strata and the residents of Strathcona Village. We're located, like I said, at nine eight three East Hastings, directly adjacent to the B I rail line and across from the development site, and we're in opposition to the amendments to the zoning and the development bylaw as they stand in their current form. Not the project as a whole, but with respect to the train noise. We've been meeting with the city and C N Rail for over nine months. I've personally been working on it for more than two years to find a solution to the severe noise impacts of the rail crossing warnings at Cordova and Raymer. And I can confirm that the noise from the trains will affect, will one hundred percent affect the residents of the proposed development site, even with the five-meter setback from the property line development that's being proposed in the staff referral report. You can hear the trains halfway down Hastings, you can hear them much further than five meters away, even if they use double-pane glass, triple-pane glass, you're going to hear them. There's nothing that that window can do to, to stop the train noise coming through. And I saw the model that was presented last week, and they will be impacted, there's no way around it, especially the shelter residents and the people closest to that side. I have an audio file that I sent in, I don't know if it's going to do it justice, but I just would like to play it for everybody, just so you can get an idea. I hope it's to scale, but if someone could play that now, just for a few moments? Just waiting for the audio file to be played?
Sure. Is that coming from your end?
No, it's coming from, it should be coming from the clerk, but I don't hear it. If it's not loud enough, then...
Okay, one second, I'll just check with the clerks. Clerks, do we have that audio file to play for council?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We're attempting to do so, but we're having some issues here.
Okay, I can just stop the speaker's timer. Do you think it's something you might get resolved in the short term?
Yes, just let me check, please.
Okay, thanks, if you can hold on for a second, speaker, we'll try to do our best to get that file up for council.
Sure.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We're not sure it's going to work for us, we'll give it one more attempt, and if not, we're, our apologies.
Well, maybe we just let you work away at it and have the speaker continue, and then maybe we can have it at the end of the presentation. Please, please continue, speaker, and we'll, we'll see if we can get that going for you.
Great, thanks, yeah. So even just to go back to what the applicant was saying about, like, how it was designed, the proposal does not address the noise. The building, our building as well, as the building next door should never have been approved or built, given the fact that they're twinning the rail line, it's going to get much, much more busy than it is right now, and louder. And I, just to give you an idea of the scope of the problem, like, the city did a tremendous disservice when they built Strathcona Village to the residents here. I personally know of two neighbors on my floor who tried to sell their condos as a result of the noise. I know another couple who moved out from their rented apartment because of the noise. I've had friends, family visit, not be able to sleep due to the train noise, and in the summer, it's exponentially worse when your windows are open. If not, you have to open or close your windows twenty times a day for the amount of train traffic as it is in its current form, let alone when the twinning occurs. I hear bells when there are none at this point. So I do have heartfelt apologies from Realtors to their clients after selling them a condo in our building without fully realizing the impact the noise has had on their everyday living and sleeping. The trains stop at all hours of day and night on the cross, and the crossing bells ring before, after, and during their arrival and departure. Vibrations are another issue, but that's something that, that I don't think is solvable. And C N also tests the bells and crossing signals on a regular basis in addition to the regular train noise. I've been working on this problem since I moved into the building in August of twenty eighteen, and it's taken up to nine months ago to get the city's attention, and it's taken nine months to even begin, for the city to begin canvassing the neighborhood to get some feedback and some community engagement. So it is, it's a huge problem, and in the current form of the proposal, I, the only solution is to close down the crossing to vehicle traffic, the Cordova and Raymer crossings to vehicle traffic, and that is being considered, but it's going at a snail's pace, and I just don't have faith that it's yet, that it's, that it's going to be done to the satisfaction of living residents. Both C N and the Strathcona Residents' Association support the closure of these crossings in expectation of this problem worsening with the expansion of the port and the railway line. And I'm just here to encourage council to add as condition of this rezoning application that the city reach an agreement with C N to close the road crossings at Cordova and Raymer in order to address the severe noise-related health impacts. It's a human health issue for homeless people, people in social housing, and people buying their first home in a city as expensive as Vancouver. And I believe, we believe that everybody should be able to have a good night's sleep. And so for these reasons, I hope that you consider this when you approve this proposal. If the audio file is available now, if it's working, great, if not, I encourage you to come down here and listen to it yourself.
Thanks so much, clerks, any luck on the audio file?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, we just cannot get it to function properly.
Okay, perhaps, okay, I'll just leave it there, and thanks, I do have a question speaker from councillor Frye. Councillor Frye, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Mrs. Fernhorst, for coming in. I'm sorry, your audio file didn't work. I have, as you know, attended and live nearby, and I can relate. So I just, I'm just hoping you can kind of add a little bit more clarity for some of the folks who may not fully comprehend what you're talking about. So really, the gist of the issue here is, is the dinging of the bell at the signal crossing for the Acreade Crossing at Cordova and Raymer, and that's when trains are entering the port rail yard and coming off the Burrard inlet line, and in order to prevent cars or pedestrians from running into it, that's the, the noise that's persistent, correct?
That's right, and there's two crossings with, with different signals, so they're, they're pretty constant.
So, and, 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 and is, is the issue because these trains are stopped in the intersection for prolonged periods of time, and not actually, like, in order to get into the yard?
That's one issue, and that's something I'm working on separately with Transport Canada, but they're not supposed to, but they, they do, and they do it often. But even like an average train can take twenty minutes to get into the port, so even without a stop, which most of them do at this point now, there's still a fifteen-to-twenty-minute period of the bells going down, and a few times that by twenty trains a day, it's, it's pretty hard.
So now, I've, I had good friends who left this building because of the noise, and so, and I've, I've been in their suite, and the doors were super airtight, like, you could feel a vacuum form when you closed the doors. So even with these sort of heavy-duty doors and triple glazing and that kind of, this, this, the issue with the signal crossing noise persists?
That's right, yeah.
So, so the mitigation here isn't about, about the, the building and the windows, it's about eliminating that, that dinging bell?
Yes, that, that's correct, yeah. It's, it's about fast-tracking a, this, this project that's been raised for, for a long time now.
And what kind of impact does this have on, on quality of life? Or like, is this all hours of the day kind of thing in the middle of the night?
Yeah, it, it is, and it's to the point now, and I'm speaking for myself, not for the residents on this point, but I hear bells now when there aren't any. So it's constant, and it's been like this for years, and our building should have never been developed without that considering. And I know that, you know, years ago when it was approved, the city didn't know that this was going to become a main rail line, but now they know. And until this closure is set up and the crossings are upgraded, I, I don't believe it should go forward for, for the sake of the new residents as well as us.
Well, and, and thanks for highlighting that, because yes, at the time when the approved, the B I line was maybe like eight trips a year, and then just a few years back, they, they changed the frequency because of the falling out with C N and C P. So appreciate that it's completely changed the dynamic, but as you mentioned, they're also planning to twin that rail line. Do you know when the twinning is supposed to happen?
Um, soon, I'm, I'm not actually sure when they're going to start, but soon.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, you do have a couple more questions, councillor Kirby Young, and then councillor Donald Young. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes, then if I could ask the other councillors to mute.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll follow up on, on the same sort of line of questions, and, because I was, I am really concerned about putting housing onto an arterial next to the rail line. You mentioned that the actual signals being a sort of key source of the impact and the, sort of the physical and mental health issue, but you also mentioned vibrations. If the signal issue is addressed through the vehicle crossing or the other proposed mitigation measures, can you talk about, the vibrations would obviously remain, can you talk about what the impact of that is like?
I, I'm on the eighth floor, I know that other people lower down feel it a lot strong, more strongly than I do. So I'm just imagining the shelter is situated right next to the railways, so they're going to feel it the most. What I understand from Transport Canada and the broader issue is that this is a federally mandated rail line, so there's no, I don't see them changing that, it's a really old-school train line, I think, as well as diesel. But my understanding is that this line won't, won't move for city development, but it is, it is, it is a cause for concern for other residents, for sure.
So for the people that are downstairs, you mentioned lower floors, are they feeling, like, literally kind of walls quivering, or, you know, what's, what's, what's it actually? Can you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, so the tenants that I've spoken to, even one floor down feel it a lot, a lot stronger than I do, and they, they definitely, they know when trains are coming, things are shaking, they feel it. I, I, I feel it as well, but I just, the, the noise is so much stronger, so that's kind of been my, my focus, but it's definitely impacted how they sleep and work now that everybody's working from home and live.
Okay, and councillor Frye was talking about sort of the, the frequency increasing, how, how much has it increased over the last sort of one year, two years? Like, how much have you seen that activity go up?
A hundred percent, and it's going to go up four hundred percent because they're twinning it. So it's like, it's, it's hard right now. And, and the other thing too is there's, it's, they're not safe, and Transport Canada knows that, and so the city has a mandate to update them in conjunction with C N, and it is taking a really, really, really... a really, really, really long time. Like I've never encountered something like this in the private sector.
Okay, and you don't have to answer this one, but are you aware of any health issues that your neighbors have had as a result of being near the rail line?
I, in honesty, I, I don't have, I, I'm not able to comment on that. I, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Domino.
Uh, thank you. And following on my colleague's questions, I just wanted to follow up on, you mentioned that you've been advocating to Transport Canada, but I'm just, have you been having specific discussions with city staff? And if yes, like have they been assisting you in that advocacy?
Yes, so, I think there's a little feedback there. So, so yes, I, it was brought up with, in tandem with the Strathcona Residents Association, our STRATA, and then at the Port of Vancouver meeting nine months ago. And the city indicated that they were going to look into engaging the community and only now are they starting to engage the community. And I don't even know if that started yet. So there was agreement, like they, they have until the end of 2021 to update the crossings. And the idea was that there was going to be a pilot project where they closed it down. But then there was an idea that they wanted to open it up for pedestrian crossings as well, which I have no idea where that came from. But then that would involve closing down the existing crossing signals and adding new ones with new noise and new bells. So you can imagine the frustration after two years where, when that is the conclusion or at least the suggestion. So I, I'm just frustrated to be honest, like I, I don't mean to be, but I've really been patient. I've worked very hard on behalf of our building and in tandem with like a lot of different parties and it's, it's painfully slow and I don't see a light at the end of the tunnel yet.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, and, and just to be clear, in terms of registering your opposition to the, the current rezoning application, it is in light of your experience living in the adjacent building and the challenges. You talked about largely the sound and noise, someone else mentioned vibrations, but that, is that fair to say or reflect back?
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a pollution, like I, when I read through the proposal for the building next door, 1015 East Hastings, I saw that there was some consideration to the railway and proximity guidelines, but there was none when our building was, was put in place. And I, so I, I can't speak to what the environmental pollution is going to be when they twin these lines, but I can imagine it's going to go a lot, a lot higher. The, the sound, if not mitigated, will, will definitely increase as well and then the vibrations, basically everything. And I understand too, it's, it's something that the tenant needs and, and we have to have rail transport, but it's got to be done in a way where people can still live in their homes and, and just be able to live.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and, and the subject of the, the distance from rail lines has come up before, so appreciate you bringing it up. I'll stop there because I know there's other speakers, but appreciate you calling in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's it in terms of questions for you from council. So I will move on to the next speaker, but thank you so much. And next speaker here, one second, council. We have David Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Eddy and I'm happy to speak in support of this project from the traditional unceded territories of the Squamish, Musqueam, and Slaywithtooth Nations. In the spirit of full disclosure, I'm also the CEO of Vancouver Native Housing Society, a colleague organization and partner on several initiatives with the Friendship Centre. Indigenous people make up 2% of Vancouver's population, but roughly 35% of those who are homeless. They are truly the most marginalized of the city's population. Over the years, well more than 50 now, the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre has been a safe, trusting gathering place for members of Vancouver's urban indigenous community. Their space has been used for many and diverse events such as community celebrations, sporting events, weddings, graduation ceremonies, funerals, and all manner of announcements. One significant function they have taken on in recent years has to do with the ever, ever escalating problem of indigenous homelessness in the city. The centre has sponsored from time to time a number of shelters, buildings, and facilities to provide comfort, shelter, and warmth for those in the community living rough. Now with this proposed building at 1015 East Hastings, the plan to create a permanent space that not only provides shelter and transition spaces, but also affordable homes for individuals and families as well. Once completed, the properties will aesthetically integrate into the community such that if one didn't know, they could not be easily identified as any different from the neighboring market housing properties. It's important to remember in the context of today and what people have in mind based on what some would say was rumor and their innuendo. I say this from personal experience, having been in the social and affordable housing sector for the past 35 years in the Mount Pleasant, East Side, and downtown East Side in Vancouver. Back in the pre and post Olympic days, the City of Vancouver partnered with BC Housing to create the Provincial Homelessness Initiative, a funding program to build housing to deal with the homelessness crisis of the day. I think somebody's unmuted there and it's kind of blowing back on me. Thanks. So that initiative ultimately morphed into 14 city sites on which 14 buildings were created to house approximately 1,600 chronically homeless individuals. BNHS had one of those buildings at Broadway and Fraser, given the indigenous name Kwai Sot. The name, the Kwai Sot name was given to us by Chief Ian Campbell of the Squamish Nation. It means finding one's power in reference to 30 youth who live in the building and take part in the attached youth centre. As part of our agreement with BC Housing and the city, we created a community advisory committee to deal with the issues that might come up in the neighborhood due to the influx of 100 new residents. The committee was slated to run for a minimum of two years and then have its needs reviewed. We, we were to meet monthly. After the first four months, as no issues came up, we decided to meet bimonthly. After nine months, we agreed to meet on an as-issue related basis. Long story short, we never met again. I'm relating this story to illustrate what in my experience has been a common theme in these developments. People often, long-term residents see these larger than typical developments as potentially being a disruptive force in the neighborhoods. In my experience, these disruptions have not occurred and I don't, I don't think they will. So although we haven't had any, to date, any people speak against this project as, because of disruption in the neighborhood, there's still a few more speakers. So I, I just wanted to put that out there and just to reiterate that Vancouver Native Housing Society is totally in support of this development. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and sorry for the unmuted mic. And that's it, we do have no questions from you, for you, but thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're moving on to the next speaker. We have Clifford White, who's speaker number seven. Mr. White? Clerks, do we have Mr. White on the line?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no, we're not seeing Mr. White on the line.
Okay, thanks so much. I'll move on. Speaker number eight is withdrawn. Speaker number nine is Wai Ling Young. Wai Ling Young.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Wai Ling La, I'm a resident of Vancouver and the owner of one of the units, EPS 4557, which is the building on the west side of 900, on the west side of the project, known as 900 Block of East Hastings. I'm also the chairman of the STRATA council, but today I'm speaking personally. I, I will begin by quoting from the Guidelines for Development in Proximity to Railway Operators of May 2013, which is a 122-page document with, with no legal binding force and no penalty for non-compliance. It is therefore important for the planning committee to ensure compliance with these guidelines. I'm now quoting directly from the guidelines. On page 19, paragraph 1.4.5, land developed developers are responsible for respecting land use development policies and regulations to achieve development that considers and respects the needs of surrounding existing and future land users. As initiator of urban development, they also have the responsibility to ensure that development projects are, are integrated in exist, into existing environments. Paragraph 2.3, standard mitigations. It should be noted that implementation of such measures, that is mitigation measures, is easiest to achieve for new greenfield development, for greenfield development. For reason, this, for this reason, these measures are not intended as retrofits for existing residential neighborhoods in proximity to railway operations. Paragraph 3.1.1, standard mitigation measures, which are recommended by the, are desired as a minimum requirement. Paragraph 3.4.1.2, there is a note of ban, NB, new barriers constructed on one side of a railway opposite an older neighborhood without barriers may lead to concerns from existing residents about the potential for, for increase, noise increase due to barrier reflection. It is common for the characters of the noise to change due to frequency, duration, and time of onset, which combined may be perceived as a significant increase in noise levels. However, this is not generally supported through onsite measurements as the train will act as its own barrier to any reflected noise during passing by. So I come to the end of my, uh, hang on, I come to the end of my quotation and I'm now giving my comments. We are not yet in a position to be for or against the project. I have, I have therefore the following comments. One, the guidelines are from 2013, 2013. Is there any updates? Two, the federal government has approved the twinning of the railway lines, the CN Rail, along the stretch next to 101, 1015 and 983 East Hastings. Has the effect of this future event been taken into account? Comment number three, 983 East Hastings has metal plating which might or might not affect the effect of the noise and vibration. Comment number four, in many parts of the guidelines of 2013, it has been noted that the effect of noise and vibration is site, depending on a number of conditions. Comment number five.
And we're just coming up to five minutes. If you just want to finish this comment, that would be great. Thank you.
We would ask that a noise and vibration study by specialists be made a precondition. And also, subject to the advice of the specialists, may we also suggest that a condition be made that sound barriers are to be installed along both sides of the, both sides of the railway lines at the cost of the.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments this evening and participating tonight. We don't, I don't see any questions for, from council for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're on to Virag Sheila Vizi.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here and we understand the speaker number 10 is not on the line.
Okay, thanks so much. We'll move to speaker number 11, Suzanne Spencer.
Hello?
Hi there, I have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. My name is Suzanne and, um, thank you mayor and council. I guess at this point I'm having some technical difficulties as well, but can you hear me okay?
Yes, we, yes, we can. Please keep going.
Um, so I guess what I want to bring forth here is that, you know, the, I'm not in opposition of the project itself. I had worked with Stephanie earlier before COVID on this train committee here in the building in my residence at 983 East Hastings here. I am opposed to the location and the densification of this project being on such a small footprint. I believe when, when our buildings were built here, they probably occupy four times the space that the proposed building is looking at putting the same volume of units and people and everything in. So that is a concern for, for me. I also am on the 12th floor here, so the train noise for me is, is an issue, though it is not as much as a vibration, though I still do feel it. So I guess there's a couple of things going on here. I mean, you know, when we purchased this as a community, I feel that a lot of things have changed, as in the flags along the side of the street that were saying in 2021, or 2020, this was going to be a community, a Vancouver's most walkable community. And then now there's different signs out and flags out front that don't say that. They change them yearly. It's just incorporating different street names, not saying anything about community, which is kind of interesting. So really, I think for me, being on a high floor, having a building facing east with a, a view and sunrises, that will be affected clearly by this. If you take the math of two buildings together, you're looking at a 27-story building. I mean, you've got a 14 and 15 floor, whereas this, these buildings here, 983 East Hastings is the highest and that is 13 floors. So I just wonder why there's been so much change in, in probably less than five years of what the height restrictions, like how, how can they change? Like I need to ask that council, like why is it not the same height as this location? And what is giving them the, why are they being granted a higher building than, than anything else in this area when it's moving from industrial to what we are currently under the same zoning? What else? So I guess that's my main concern, just to reiterate, is that, you know, the, the density, the height, the volume of people, the, the disruption that will be with our train noise and then it will affect them, there's no green space around here as it is. It doesn't feel like there will be any green space in the foreseeable future. There's clearly a lot of industrial around here. I, I feel that's probably more of what we purchased into than what is being proposed. And it seems in the two years that I've been involved, there's changes that are Um, and it seems in the two years that I've been involved, there's changes that are being made to what will be going in there, in that location. Um, like, it's not in the same line as when this building was built. I was not part of what was going on when this building was built.
We're just at the five-minute mark?
And I'm probably, yep, I'm, I'm, yep, I'm pretty much done, so, uh, I've.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Just, I'll have you holding the line for one second. Uh, councillor Dominick, did you have a question for the speaker?
No, I don't. I think that's a holdover.
Okay, thanks so much. Sorry. Uh, thank you, speaker. That's, uh, there are no questions for you, so thank you so much for participating this evening, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Um, council, the next speaker is, uh, speaker number twelve, and the final speaker listed on, uh, on the, uh, on the pre-registration list is Sandra Eetman. Hello?
Hat- oh, Tanshe, hello.
Hi there. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Hi there. My name is Sandra Eetman, and I'm a portfolio manager with the Aboriginal Housing Management Association, or AMA. And I'm an A T person, and I'd like to acknowledge the lands that we're speaking on, the unceded and traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squawamis, and Sabatoos Nations. And I'm here this evening on behalf of AMA to support the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre and B C Housing Sponsorship, Partnership, excuse me, of the ten fifteen East Hastings Street Development, uh, in hopes for the approval of the rezoning of this site. Um, AMA is an umbrella organization composed of forty-one members that are each Indigenous housing and service providers, the Vancouver Friendship Centre being one. Our members represent over five thousand Indigenous families living in urban, rural, and northern regions of British Columbia. Uh, we're created for Indigenous people by Indigenous people, and we're the first Indigenous housing authority in Canada and only second in the world. The Vancouver Friendship Centre, as has already been noticed, noted this evening, uh, they're very established. They've established trust and commitment by providing services for Vancouver's urban Indigenous community for the past fifty-plus years. The Friendship Centre recognizes the great need, uh, and also AMA recognizes the great need throughout the housing spectrum, from homelessness services, supportive housing, subsidized housing, and affordable housing. And we really see that this project is a part of the solution to the need. Um, and again, and as it's been noted this evening, that in response to the Aboriginal housing and wellness strategy of the Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council, the city's response was an agreement in principle to the development of a mixed-use project that would co-locate the permanent shelter, uh, social housing, and health services, which, uh, is in a part of this now. Um, the approval of the rezoning would definitely show the goodwill of the city's commitment to reconciliation. Uh, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with B C Housing in two thousand seventeen to deliver a permanent shelter, social, and supportive housing, and also there was recognition that a market rental component to the project would help maintain financial viability. This development will provide much-needed culturally safe and inclusive housing that celebrates Indigenous culture through place-making. This multifaceted development fits into the documented priorities of the neighborhood. The downtown east side plan strives to ensure that the area's diverse cultural heritage is recognized and celebrated, highlighting the need for housing options that supports diversity, and explicitly calling for the development, uh, of a development that addresses Aboriginal place-making. Um, if approved by the city council, this project provides eighty units of permanent shelter beds for people and families experiencing homelessness. And as has been discussed earlier, with the current shelter, um, in two thousand nine, it was a temporary solution to homelessness in the city, and in particular to Indigenous homelessness. And here we are, ten years later, and the shelter, um, which I'm quite familiar with, is at capacity, uh, most every night with one hundred guests. So, um, and it is located in a, a city-owned warehouse that is quite an older building, and, um, the Friendship Centre is not able to provide all the amenities that it would like to. So then a new shelter would definitely, um, give the capacity to provide, um, all the needed amenities and supports, as well, um, with the twenty-five supportive housing units, um, that will be, uh, wonderful for people that are ready to move from the shelter to, um, supportive living situations. And also the, um, eighty-five affordable renting, rental units as well will definitely help with the, um, much-needed housing, uh, for Indigenous families in the city. And, uh, the fifty-three new market rental, uh, units, um, as I said before, would really, um, contribute to the, uh, financial viability of this project. So, um, this project provides housing options to Indigenous people of all ages struggling to find shelter, supportive housing, and a place to call home. This development also includes social enterprise.
Sorry about that. I was, I was on mute. I tried to give you your five-minute warning, uh, but you are well.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, well, thank you so, thank you so much for the opportunity and for speaking.
Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. Um, and, uh, council, we are at the end of our speakers list, so I'm going to call the first time for other speakers. Uh, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code ninety-three four one seven pound to get on the list, and that's on Twitter and on the live stream. Uh, just going to ask for the clerks if there's anybody to speak to this item. I know there's lots for the next item, but, uh, me for this one.
Yes, it is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. We do have a number on the line for the next item, but for this item, we have no one on the line.
Okay, um, so I'm going to call a second time. Um, I know it's strange to ask you to check again, but that's the kind of process we have to follow here. Anybody to, uh, speak to this, this, uh, this item?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and we still have none left for this item.
Okay, council, I'm going to call a third time, and, uh, just to give people a bit of time to sign on. I am having a little problem with my connection, council, so I am going to, uh, instead of the regular five minutes, I'm going to ask for ten minutes so I can restart my computer and just, uh, get my video, uh, kind of back up and running. So it's seven thirty-eight now. Let's come back at, uh, seven forty-eight, and, uh, so we'll see you in ten minutes, and hopefully that'll all be fixed. So thanks, clerks, and then we'll be back in, in, uh, ten minutes. Uh, seven forty-eight on my clock. How are we doing for?
So it is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. I'm just getting a message saying that there are no more speakers for item number two.
Okay, so are we reconvene now? I'm just checking for quorum to make sure. One, two, three, four, five. Yep, you got quorum, so.
Yes, we do have quorum.
Great, okay, thanks. Whoops, and I'm just, I forgot to pull my script up here, so just take one second. Okay, so, uh, since we have called three times, so we'll, uh, close the speakers list now. As we've had little or no, um, correspondence, we'll close the, uh, uh, the receipt of public comments. Um, so I'm going to move to the applicant now. Uh, do we have any closing comments?
Yes. Uh, I did just want to reconfirm that we have undertaken in-depth noise and vibration studies and continue to update these reports, and are working as best as we can with staff and CN Rail directly on this site, granted to the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre Society for this project by the city of Vancouver. As discussed, this project is desperately needed to replace the existing, uh, temporary emergency shelter at two oh one and to respond to need within the community. By creating a culturally safe and welcoming space, the Friendship Centre is responding to a need for a shelter operated by and for urban Indigenous people. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so I see a bunch of questions, uh, from councillors for staff, and I do hear some noise in the background, so if I can get folks to just, uh, check to make sure they're on mute, I'll move to councillor Swanson for questions to staff.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think that the concern about noise is a real concern. I used to have a friend who lived in the Four Sisters Co-op on the north side, right across the street from the train, and it was definitely, uh, impossible to sleep through a train going by, and if you had, for example, a baby that you were trying to put down, or it could be quite scary, I think, for a little kid. So I just want to ask the staff, you know, can you work with the applicant to make sure that? to make sure that there's some mitigation measures here to deal with the noise on that side of the building?
Before I turn it to staff, I just want to note that somebody is not on mute, and we are hearing some background noise, a bit of conversation. But with that, I'll turn it over to the planning staff.
Uh, thank you for your question, councillor Swanson. This is Rosemary Draskovich, Senior Transportation Development Engineer. So as part of the application, the development is required to meet a few different guidelines that we've noted related to noise and vibration, as well as proximity to the rail line. These guidelines are overseen by the rail line and the federal government. Those are the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and Railway Association of Canada. So there are conditions in the rezoning report that speak to the development needing to meet those requirements and needing to provide confirmation from CN that CN has reviewed their development application with respect to meeting all of those noise and proximity requirements. In addition to that, I'll also note, separate from this project, through a city-led pilot project, staff are looking at different designs at the railway crossings proximal to this site. So those are the crossings at Raymer, as well as Cordova, to look at options that would allow CN to cease the warning flashers and the bells when there's train activity nearby. So that's something that's in progress right now, and staff have put together draft designs right now that they need to engage on with the nearby residents and businesses. And that's happening sort of parallel, but separate from this project.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Dominado, up to five.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And yeah, I'd like to just follow up with staff on just the questions that arose from some of the neighbouring residents around sound and safety with respect to the train lines, and in particular, the proximity guidelines. And I'm glad that that was raised because it came up at Ofceam, but also at Metro Vancouver. And just whether the building design itself has, you know, while we haven't adopted those guidelines here in Vancouver, whether the building itself includes like a crash wall component and sound barriers as sort of identified in those guidelines. We can't meet the proximity of thirty meters, obviously, in this particular context, but are those integrated into the building design?
Hi, it's Marcel from rezoning. So through the inquiry process and through the review process with CN, so they determined that a five-meter setback from the right-of-way was sufficient, recognizing that it is a spur line, and if I'm not mistaken, that requires a fifteen-meter setback normally, but they signed off that a five-meter would be sufficient. In terms of the design, specifically, there is a crash wall that would be part of the podium of the development, so that would be one meter thick and then three meters high. So that would basically be fronting that right-of-way. So those are specific design measures in relation to the proximity.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll pause there, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Fry, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And also on the subject of rail proximity and noise and livability, I had previously attempted to submit a conditional amendment for this, which legal advised me would not be appropriate. I think this is a great project for a variety of reasons, but I do remain concerned around the signal crossing noise and the impacts on, obviously, the existing residents of the Strathcona village, but the future residents of this site, having observed them firsthand the extent to which the signal crossing and the railway warning system bells are quite disruptive and at all hours. So am I to understand that the grade crossing standards, the regulations of Transport Canada have to be enacted by November twenty-eighth of 2021? So that's later this year that we need to implement the GCR?
That's correct. So all at-grade crossings need to meet the Transport Canada requirement, or any upgrades need to meet the Transport Canada requirement by November 2021.
So when it comes to potentially eliminating this at-grade crossing so that the warning alarm systems aren't being triggered at all hours of the day and disrupting livability for folks who, you know, we are obviously locating in close proximity to an active rail line, are we on track to see some kind of solution by November twenty-eighth?
Yeah, that's certainly the intent. So as I mentioned previously, that we do have draft designs that are being finalized. There is an engagement process that does need to happen as well, and that's on track to happen starting mid-March. So that's within the next four weeks or so. And following that, you know, provided that all of the engagement moves smoothly and that the designs are, you know, supported, we would be on track to having upgrades by November 2021.
Okay, well, I appreciate that and the opportunity to articulate this. I have had a conversation with the general manager of engineering and aware of the issue and the timing and the impacts on the folks. So I will forego adding any kind of clunky amendment that's gonna make our legal team nervous, with the understanding that you guys hear this and you've heard from the residents, and we recognize that it is a real impact on the livability and quiet enjoyment that most everyone can expect. And when it comes to these signal warnings, it's a relatively simple fix, especially at an at-grade crossing like Cordova and Raymer, which is very underutilized by cars, pedestrians, cyclists, and what have you. So I do appreciate that that work is ongoing, and it is really important to the future residents of this location, and of course, the existing residents right now in the Strathcona village. So I will yield my time at that, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Kirby Young. Questions to staff, up to five minutes.
No, I'm fine for questions. I thought we were wrapping, so I'll wait, thanks.
Thanks, councillor Dominado, questions to staff?
No, sorry, I'll take my stuff off.
Councillor Boyle, questions to staff?
Um, thanks. I also actually had my questions answered and was just happy to move the recommendations.
Okay. Okay, that's great. So I'm gonna move us to the main queue. Thanks so much. If you'd like to, councillor Boyle, up to five minutes for debate and discussion, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be really quick because I think this project is absolutely essential, and I hugely and wholeheartedly support it. It is, as we've heard from people, badly-needed housing. It's been in the works for a long time. And as we've heard, the Friendship Centre and many partners have been working on it for a long time. I think this is a really celebratory moment to get it to this point and hopefully see it supported to move forward. As Ms. Tatush said, it's an important act of reconciliation and of decolonization. And so I just wanna add, I hear and council hears and staff clearly hear the noise and train concerns. I think it's one of the many important reasons that we should be supporting and building more rental and non-market housing off of major arterials and be adapting our policies to make that easier to do. And in the meantime, this is a very exciting and badly-needed project, and I'm very glad to see it move forward and look forward to coming in touring the space and meeting folks who will call it home in the neighbourhood.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'll also be brief, because I know we have a full night ahead. This is a tough one for me, not because it's not much-needed housing. It is, so that's obviously a positive. The fact that it has full support of our urban Indigenous community and the nonprofit partners from the Aboriginal housing sector is really important. I hear that loud and clear. We do have a dire need for this housing. Our urban Indigenous community are overrepresented amongst those that need housing, and I think everybody would agree with that. And so the ability to provide a significant number of units, particularly with the 201 Shelter of Replacement, I think is critically important. However, there's a couple of things that stand out for me on this project that I struggle with. One is the shift from the industrial land into the rezoning here. And I think I'm concerned about that move to CD1 because we are losing so much of our industrial land. If we were making that decision today with a combination of a loss of industrial land and putting housing on an arterial with exposure to pollution and articulate matter, and near a rail line with all of the associated issues, as well as sort of the additional noise and the impacts that has on physical and mental wellbeing, I wouldn't support taking that land out of industrial right now. However, that decision was made by a prior council, and we do have a very important housing need to fill here. Having said that, I wanna provide quality housing, and I am pretty gravely concerned with the proximity to the rail line and the associated issues there because you can only mitigate to an extent, as I think we've heard. So this is a question, I think, of kind of weighing the greater good and lesser evils, but knowing that we are putting people in a housing situation that is less than ideal in terms of wellness. And that concerns me, quite frankly. So I don't wanna not support this project, but I'm not doing so sort of with a resounding enthusiasm and support because I think that I'd like to see sites that do provide more quality of life and sort of that opportunity for full wellness as opposed to the noise and potential health issues that come with this particular site. And, you know, as I said, again, I think the industrial land piece is really critically important moving forward. So it does underscore for me that when council makes these decisions, and that one, when staff reference was done in the mid-nineties, they have long-term effects, which may not always be easy to see when those decisions are being made. But I think that's a good learning opportunity to sort of look forward if some of these things do come before council, and we look at rezoning of different areas sort of in our urban context. So I will support it for all the good reasons that have been indicated, but with the reservations that I've expressed. Thank you.
Thanks. I do have myself on the list, so if I could turn the chair over to councillor Carr for five minutes?
Deputy Mayor, yes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Great, so I'll turn it over to you, and can I start the?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thanks very much. So councillor, this is a, I guess, a congratulations to the proponents. Of course, I'll be supporting this. I really like what you've done here and the absolute contribution this will make to our community. And so thanks to the proponents and for staff for working through this. I did wanna say, I did have a very long conversation with Transportation Minister Mark Garnault, and he was still in that portfolio about this exact issue. There was a significant, I think, agreement, at least not formally, but informal agreement, that the federal government would do, invest a significant amount of money to mitigate the impacts on the community with this rail investment. But Mr. Garnault, of course, has moved on to a different portfolio, so I can commit to you that I will circle back with the new transportation minister to see where those monies are. There is a significant amount of money coming through an infrastructure investment fund, but I do think that there is mitigation money put aside by Transport Canada for these types of projects. I know the minister and I were talking about a variety of things, but I will pledge to go back and see where that is and see if we can make that community just more livable for everybody. So just wanted to pass that along that I do think there's something that may have kind of dropped off Transport Canada's kind of things-to-do list, and we'll circle back with them to see if we can get increased investment to mitigate noise and safety problems there. So that's it for me, and I'll be supporting this. If I can have the chair back whenever you're ready, councillor, deputy mayor Carr?
I am ready. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, okay. Councillor Dominado, up to five.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And very briefly, because I think I know my colleagues have covered off a number of comments I would have made, but I appreciate that we've heard very clearly that there's support from the urban Indigenous community for this proposal and project. But I also appreciate the concerns and considerations that have been raised about livability in the context of being adjacent to the rail line. There's one thing I wanna highlight and underscore that relates to this particular proposal that I very much appreciate and value is the mixed use, but particularly the shelter component and then the homes with the supportive wraparound services with the intention of individuals coming into the shelter, the temporary shelter space, and being able to move to more independent living in the homes with the wraparound services. And I think that's a great stride, and it'd be great to see more of that in proposals because often it's that laddering that is critical for people, and people need different types of supports and housing at different times in their lives. But certainly, we want to support more stability for people. And so I really appreciate that model and also the real focus around a safe space and a place where people are gonna feel valued and accepted and a focus on inclusion and Indigenous ways of being. So I'll be supporting the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fry, up to five.
Yeah, thanks. And I wanna thank the speakers who came and spoke to this. As many will know, I live very close by this location. And in fact, both the mayor and I, in our pre-elected lives, have worked at Raycam Community Centre, which is very close by. And I just wanna highlight that there is a huge amount of support in the community for this. And I think it's noteworthy that we didn't hear any opposition to this project from the community as such. And really, most of the concerns were around the issue of livability as a result of the rail. Now, this is the first project, residential project, that this council, or any council, have approved since the reenact, the sort of expansion of the Burrard inlet line. We have variously discussed this as part of the False Creek arterial and where money is gonna be earmarked for improving the at-grade crossing and the strategies around this newly-activated line. And I think it's important that it is highlighted as part of this project. This is a fantastic project, and it's delivering a lot for our city and for, obviously, for our urban Indigenous population and really just the public realm in this location because it is, right now, just an ugly vacant lot filled with garbage, and it's not doing anything. And this will be a really nice addition to that part of the neighbourhood. I have no doubt about that. I do want to take this moment, though, that we've acknowledged that there is a significant livability issue that can be quite simply solved by eliminating these grade crossings and will make a huge improvement for folks who are living there now and folks who will be living there in the future. And I just really wanna highlight that that has got to be a priority, and I do appreciate staff reiterating that this is on the work plan to be fulfilled by November of this year. And I'm just really hopeful that we will get it right because I think as we recognize, we do have a number of at-grade crossings in our city. And the applicant's done a fantastic job with this building, and I know that they've addressed the issues of vibration and noise and pollution and all those kind of things. But there is a role for us as the city to invest in that public realm component so we can make sure that things like a rail warning system are not keeping people up at all hours of the night. So otherwise, super happy to support this project and looking forward to some solutions around the public realm and how our city can lead the way on that, working with Transport Canada and CN. Thanks.
Thanks. Councillor Hardwick, up to five.
Thank you. This is a really interesting project for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is when we think about the history of Vancouver, we are at the terminus of the railway. And I don't think that the early land-use planning really conceived that there would be housing with this kind of adjacency to these kinds of rail functions. So, you know, what I'm hearing from a variety of the speakers was this is a persistent problem, and decisions have been made to locate housing in proximity to rail lines, which is a problem in and of itself. I'm happy to hear the solutions that are in the works, but it won't change the reality of the location. I'm concerned about it because as, sorry, I hear breathing. As I heard from councillor Kirby Young, you know, we have a very limited supply of industrial land, and we're losing it all the time, and I really have to. And I really have to wonder, back in the mid 90s, when the decision was made around this land, if they hadn't considered what would happen with the decline of industrial land and the changing nature of the workplace. But what's done is done. We can't undo it. And so what we do have is a development here that's a really interesting combination in mix and balance from Aboriginal housing, which I think is doing a tremendous job of addressing a variety of concerns, which is why I asked the questions about how different segments were being treated in terms of entrances and bike parking and things of that nature. But one thing concerns me in all of these applications, whenever I hear reference to the Housing Vancouver Strategy as justification, it frustrates me because it's, I believe, a very flawed policy that needs updated data for recalibration, hint, hint. But on balance, I think this is a positive project and one that should be supported.
Thank you. Counselor Carr, up to five. Counselor Carr?
Mayor Counselor Carr just texted me. She was kicked off WebEx through a connection issue, so she may not be available to speak to this.
Okay. If folks are kicked off, I know I've been having a little trouble tonight as well. I'm not sure if other councillors have. Perhaps I can move to, the thing is with to participate in the vote, you have to be present for the whole thing.
I believe she's trying to get my phone.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Hi, yeah, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Carr.
Apologies for that. I seem to have somehow lost my connection. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, was on the list to inform you that although I listened to the majority of this, well, I listened to the majority of this item on the agenda, I was not able to participate during the time where I was attending a deputy mayor event. So I missed some of the speakers and there's no way for me to hear those speakers. The recording, of course, is not available, so I'm sorry I'm not going to be able to participate in the vote.
Okay. Thanks so much for that. We'll move on to Counselor Weeb, up to five.
Yeah, I voiced my support. Obviously, I appreciate that this project follows the Aboriginal housing wellness strategy on a regional level. And I also think that the social enterprise is really creative. I really appreciate the partners all coming together on this project to create a beautiful building that meets a lot of things we haven't seen before. I think the cultural spaces, the transitional housing, the navigation center for our most vulnerable, the opportunity to also open up the industrial space at 201. So in the future, because that's a city-owned property, we have an opportunity to deliver on some of our industrial needs. But in this space, which is not displacing anyone, we can deliver on huge opportunities here. So really appreciate everyone pulling this together and I will be supportive.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson, up to five.
I remember when this was announced, which seems like eons ago. So thanks to the Aboriginal Friendship Centre folks and everyone for working so hard to bring it together. I know it hasn't been easy. For me, it would be nice if there was more units at Shelter Raid, if there was no noise from the train, if it wasn't on a polluting arterial. I wish the shelter space was additional rather than a replacement shelter. But there is an absolutely dire, dire, dire need for housing and for indigenous-focused housing. So I think it can be a good project and I'm definitely going to go for it.
Thanks so much. Counsel, that's it for speakers to this, so I'm going to call the vote on this project. Just the clerks to trigger that.
Point of privilege, Mayor Stewart, is Counselor DeGenova?
Counselor DeGenova, go ahead. Please, yes. Okay, thanks. I'll make sure the clerks record that. Please mark Counselor DeGenova in favor. Okay, counsel, that has passed unanimously. If I can have the clerks pull the vote up on screen. Sorry, clerks, I don't have my orange cone up. Is it on screen now?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We do have it on the screen here in the council chamber.
Okay, thank you so much. So counsel, that completes that item. And now we're going to move on to the final item on our agenda today, which is a CD1 rezoning for 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street. Let's ask, has any member of council wished to declare a conflict of interest? Nope. Okay, so I'm going to get the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by James Evans to rezone 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street from RM4 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 35 secured rental housing units, of which 20% of the residential floor area will be secured as moderate income units under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. A height of 19.3 is recommended and an FSR of 2.95 is proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. 150 pieces of correspondence and support, 506 pieces of correspondence in opposition. This includes one petition with 277 signatures and four pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Great. Thank you so much. Sorry about that bang, counsel. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll 318-333-538610, followed by code 93417 pound. We have Carly Rosenblatt from the Rezoning Centre to present on this application. And we'll see the application because we have lots of speakers on this one. If I can get folks to mute. Great.
I'm just pulling up the presentation. One moment, please.
Okay.
Can you see that presentation, Mr.?
I can see it on the WebEx. Just ask the clerks if it's up on the public screen.
Mayor Stewart, it's just coming up on the public screen.
Great. Thanks so much. Please go ahead with the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Carly Rosenblatt and I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, also known as MRRP. The subject site, shown in red, is made up of two lots at the southeast corner of West Fourth Avenue and Balaklava Street. The lots are zoned RM4 district and currently developed with three duplexes. The RM4 district schedule permits multiple dwelling use with a maximum height of 10.7 meters and a density of 1.45 FSR, typically in the form of a four-story residential building with strata ownership. North, east, and west of the site is zoned RM4 and contains low-rise three- and four-story apartments. To the south, there are detached houses zoned RT7, which permits a maximum development potential for multiple dwelling use of 10.7 meters in height and 0.6 FSR in density. The site is approximately 687 square meters in size and has 13 residential tenants, 11 of whom qualify for tenant relocation under the city's tenant relocation policy. The site is located in the Rental Housing Stock Official Development Plan that was approved by council in 2007 and last amended in 2018. The policy requires one-for-one replacement of existing rental housing units. If redevelopment were to occur, the six existing rental units would be required to be replaced. The site is occupied by three duplexes, each with two units, constructed in the 1940s and largely renovated in the 1970s. Heritage staff have confirmed the site does not include any historic features and is not on the heritage register. This is a view from West Fourth Avenue looking east. Here is a bird's eye view of the site that shows the two properties. 2010 Balaklava Street contains two duplexes, each with two units per building. 3084 West Fourth Avenue contains one duplex with two units. There are a total of six units on the site. The site is located in the Kipstalana neighborhood, which contains a variety of neighborhood amenities. From the map, you can see parks, community spaces, institutional sites, and childcare locations within approximately a 15-minute walk of the site. There is access to Tatlow Park, McBride Park, and other outdoor recreation spaces. The Kipstalana Public Library is nearby and childcare is provided at Kids Cottage Daycare, Jericho Kids Club General Gordon, and at St. James Daycare Center. Nearby institutional spaces include the St. James Longup Community Center, Redemption Church, Lord's Grace Church, and City Life Church. In addition, there are multiple shopping districts, bicycle routes, and transit routes nearby the subject site. In 2017, council approved the Vancouver Housing Strategy as well as the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. And this is the program which enables consideration of this rezoning application. The intent of the MRRP program is to encourage new rental units that are permanently secured for moderate income households, those earning between $30,000 to $80,000 per year. Under this policy, applications must secure a minimum of 20% of the proposed residential floor area for moderate income units. The program establishes incentives, including additional height and density, to make securing below-market units a viable option in comparison to homeownership developments generally constructed under existing zoning. The city's other rental programs, such as the Secured Rental Policy, strictly prohibit the provision of additional density on RM zone sites with any existing rental unit. The site contains a total of six rental units. Therefore, MRRP is the only policy door that enables consideration of additional height and density. The site could be redeveloped under the RM4 district schedule, provided the six existing rental units are replaced. However, there would be no requirement to secure additional rental units or units at below-market rates. Proposals under MRRP policy were considered based on criteria that included provision of 100% secured rental units, level of affordability, impact on existing renters, proposed unit mix, proximity to transit and amenities, context and neighborhood fit. As part of the review and selection for proposals for consideration under MRRP, it was determined the subject site answered a number of those objectives. RM zone sites may be considered for redevelopment for height of up to six stories, where there is a low number of existing tenants, where there are buildings with a maximum of three existing rental units, rather than development sites with a maximum of three units. The subject site is located off West Fourth Avenue Arterial and is currently developed with three separate buildings, each with two rental units, thereby allowing it to be considered under MRRP. The MRRP program was intentionally drafted with this distinction of buildings limited to three rental units as opposed to development sites with three units in order to provide opportunities for small, underutilized RM4 sites to redevelop. The intent of limiting the consideration to buildings with three units was to emphasize protection of purpose-built rental housing while exploring opportunities for redevelopment of secondary rental options in the RM zoning district. This application is proposing a six-story building with 35 secured rental units, of which 20% of the residential floor area would be secured as moderate income rental units, approximately eight units. A minimum of 35% of the units are family-oriented, which meets the city's family room housing mix policy requirements. The overall density for this project is 2.95 FSR. The proposed height is 19.3 meters and parking is accessed from the lane and is being provided per the parking bylaw. The project meets and exceeds the Rental Housing Stock Official Development Plan requirement with 35 new rental units in place of the existing six rental units. Redevelopment of the site would require the relocation of existing tenants and applicant has provided a draft tenant relocation plan whereby eligible tenants who choose to do so can exercise the right to return to one of the replacement units in the new building at 20% below-market rate or at rates for the moderate income unit, provided they meet eligibility requirements. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 122 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. This slide demonstrates the comparison between renting and ownership costs for housing in Vancouver's west side. Based on CMHP data, ownership of a median-priced unit on the west side of Vancouver ranges from over $2,800 monthly for a studio unit up to nearly $5,191 for a two-bedroom unit. The ownership costs are calculated using BCA assessment on the following assumptions: recent sale prices by unit type, a 10% down payment, 5% mortgage rate, 25-year amortization, and $150 to $250 monthly strategies and monthly property taxes. With respect to proposed rental units, these will be secured through a housing agreement, both prohibiting the stratification of units while also limiting the rates at which rents for the moderate income units may be increased, even on a change in tenant. Both moderate income rental rates and the market rates will ultimately be well below the monthly cost of homeownership. This slide outlines the moderate income rents. The application proposes approximately eight moderate income units at rates shown here between $950 and $1,600 per month. In 2016, the median household income in the Kipstalana neighborhood was $72,839. The rental rates proposed would be affordable to a number of households and occupations such as graphic arts technician for a studio or a transit driver and administrative assistant for a two-bedroom unit. As part of the MRRP program, each applicant is required to include a financial statement for the city's review to assess the value of the project and determine if additional land lift has been created through the pilot zoning incentives. The performer for this project has been reviewed by the city's real estate division, who conclude that there is no land lift being generated through this application. The cost to secure 35 rental units over 60 years and the lifetime of the building with 20% of the residential floor area secured with vacancy control reduced any additional land lift to zero. Had there been additional land lift value created for secured rental projects, the city's practice is to seek a greater degree of affordability for rental units. A pre-application open house was held in February 2019 and attended by approximately 75 people. Following submission of the rezoning application, a city-hosted open house was held in person in March 2020 and attended by approximately 121 people. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information and a form to easily submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 175 pieces of feedback, as well as one petition organized by the community group We Love Kip opposing the application, which contained approximately 638 signatures. We heard a variety of comments throughout the review of this application. Key themes of support included the provision of rental housing, building height, density and design, and proximity to transit. In general, people were concerned about the proposal, specifically related to the building height and neighborhood context, tree protection, school capacity, impact on parking and traffic, and the consultation process. Given the feedback, staff have reviewed the concern and have taken this into consideration in their review of the project. Building height was cited as a concern. A typical RM4 building profile results in a three-and-a-half to four-story residential building. The proposed mapping shows a six-story building with the upper levels reduced in size from the floors below it and setback an additional 1.52 meters from the floors below it. and set back an additional 1.52 meters from the floors below it on the north, south, and west side, giving it the appearance of a five-story building when viewed from the street. In response to public concern regarding the height of the building, staff recommended reducing the floor-to-floor height and minimizing the massing on the top floor of the building. Appendix B contains conditions to lower the overall height by three feet. And the draft CD1 bylaw restricts the building height to 19.3 meters instead of 20.23 meters as originally proposed. The MRRP program allows for consideration of six stories in height to assist with the delivery of moderate-income rental units. The MRRP program intends to increase the supply and affordability of secured rental units for moderate-income households and to address Vancouver's low vacancy rate. With respect to concerns regarding neighborhood fit, this slide demonstrates an example of what adherence to some of the conditions in Appendix B of the report may look like, with further design development expected to take place at the development permit stage. All ground-level units have individual entrances and landscape patios facing the street. Additional landscaping and trees have been added along the perimeter of the site to enhance the public realm, reinforcing a pedestrian scale. Increased soft and hard landscaping have been incorporated in the outdoor amenity space at the northwest corner of the site. Garden plots have been added to the southwest corner of the building, and the waste receptacles have been relocated to the interior of the building. The parcade is pulled back to ensure the mature coniferous trees along West Fourth Avenue are protected. Retention of the significant trees assists in making the scale transition to adjacent apartment buildings. As well, additional shrubs and vines have been added to screen the parcade ramp from the lane. This slide illustrates several nearby commercial and residential projects along West Fourth Avenue to demonstrate what elements contribute to the character of the Kitsellano neighborhood. The most consistent aspect is variety. Variety is what creates visual interest in a vibrant pedestrian environment. In the vicinity of the project, there are a variety of scales, massings, a mix of flat and sloping roofs, numerous architectural styles, and a wide array of cladding materials. More specifically, building scales ranges from one to four stories in nearby commercial and residential areas, with building sites often related to the era when it was developed. Newer buildings are usually bigger. The architectural styles represent the history of the neighborhood. Textured building materials such as bricks and horizontal siding help contribute to a fine-grained human scale. Visual interest is also created through light and shadows as a result of shifts in the wall plane and elements such as balconies and entry canopies. The landscaping is mature, with large trees giving scale to the buildings. The street edges are well-defined with low hedging and decorative fencing along the perimeter, and there is a layered approach which creates interest for pedestrians. There are also many blooming trees such as magnolias. This slide represents some precedent images the applicant is exploring to be more compatible with the neighborhood, to be resolved at the development permit stage. The applicant is exploring use of color and texture to break up the scale of the building. Use of horizontal siding traditionally associated with residential buildings helps relate to nearby residential buildings. Staff recommends many detailed building and landscaping conditions in the appendix of the report to ensure further design development relates to the Kitsellano neighborhood context. The form and character will evolve further at the development permit stage. Generally respondents were concerned with the number of vehicle parking spaces proposed and increased traffic congestion. The project will comply with the parking bylaw. The proposed development is well-served by public transit and cycling infrastructure as shown on the map above. The site is located approximately 100 meters from the nearest bus stop and is within a two-block radius of five bus routes. The site is also adjacent to the Balaclava Bike Way. Conditions in the report require enhanced safety measures for all roadway users, and it is expected the intersection of West Fourth Avenue and Balaclava Street will deliver provision of street improvements adjacent to the site, such as new sidewalks, a protected raised bike lane along Balaclava Street, new pedestrian lane crossings, and upgrades to the existing traffic signals and street lighting. The MRRP program is one approach to pursue some of the housing goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy with respect to delivering 4,000 new privately-owned below-market rental units secured for moderate-income households. Finding available rental units is a challenge across the city with extremely low vacancy rates at less than 1%. There continues to be a significant need for secured purpose-built rental housing options that are affordable to households earning moderate incomes. The intent of MRRP is to help address the gap in the rental housing market in neighborhoods across the city. The rezoning consultation process was fulsome and followed all city procedures. However, some neighbors expressed concern with the project, specifically with the scale of the building, neighborhood fit. There were approximately 121 people in attendance at the city-hosted open house, and staff received nearly 178 pieces of feedback in addition to a petition. Each comment and question received, as well as the comments from the urban design panel, helped to inform the staff recommendations and conditions provided in their report presented on tonight. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaclava from RM4 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the MRRP program. If approved, the application would contribute 35 new secured rental units. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the presentation. I'm just going to ask now if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Can you hear me?
We've got a, we have a bit of feedback.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that, yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
No.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Can I speak?
Yes, you've got a bit of an echo.
Well, I... Turn my... Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. You've got a bit of an echo, but you're loud and clear.
How do I turn? If I turn my machine off...
I think you're okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, you, you go ahead up...
Yes, no.
Yes, go ahead, and you're the applicant.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening.
Go ahead.
For the council.
Hello, please go ahead. Hi, please go ahead.
Naomi, my wife of 55 years and I have owned and maintained the adjacent properties at 2010 Balaclava Street and 3084 West Fourth since 1970 and 1976 respectively. Although our family has cared for this property for 50 years, the buildings themselves were constructed in 1942. I grew up in Kitsellano, having attended both Bayview and General Gordon Schools, finishing up at UBC in 1960. In my high school years, the Kits Pool was the center of my summers. My wife and I have since raised our two sons in Dunbar and Kitsellano. Much of our lives has been in this community, and we are heavily involved today. We've seen many changes in this neighborhood, specifically at this intersection. For this reason, we are committed to improving the site in a meaningful way. After almost eight years and how best to improve the property, we became aware in 2017 of the city's Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. This pilot program would provide a mixture of market and moderate-income rental homes on this site for the life of the new building. We applied for and were accepted to the pilot program. We are classic mom-and-pop operators. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program for your consideration this evening. We are proud of this proposal. We are thrilled to have the opportunity to contribute to Kitsellano's housing market and make a positive difference in Kitsellano's rental community. I'd like now to introduce you to the project team. Project Manager, Mr. Mark Evans. And the Architect, Mr. Mark Blackwood from Acoustics Architecture. Mayor and Council, Mr. James Evans.
Thank you so much. Please go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to ask Mark Blackwood to speak first, and then I'll speak after him.
Okay. And we're just watching your display come up here, so it's... And if, just hold on before you speak, and I'm going to make sure the clerks have it up on the public screen as well.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and yes, it should be on the public screen.
Great, thanks so much. So please go ahead, applicants.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Blackwood. I'm an architect and principal at Acoustics Architecture. My presentation is really focused on some of the design enhancements that have occurred since the initial application. Carly and staff have done a good job in summarizing the more technical aspects of the project. To provide a little bit of background, as part of the rezoning process, this particular project has gone to the urban design panel. And I'd just like to report that during that process, it did receive very enthusiastic response and unanimous support at that panel hearing. Regardless of that, we did go back and look at a few items and aspects of the projects and looked for potential improvements to enhance the neighborliness of the project. As Carly had mentioned, there were a few items that did raise some concern. So the slides that you see in front of you just really highlight some of the items that staff was highlighting in plan. First and foremost, we did look at reducing the building height slightly as notated by the horizontal dotted line, which shows the original height of the building during the original application. At the street level, each of the ground-level suites now has swing doors and direct access to Fourth Avenue and to Balaclava. Part of the response there was to ensure that the building has kind of an animated streetscape and the units really kind of engage the street at the ground level. So in addition to the swing doors, also the inclusion of entry arbors and gates will be added to the landscape design. Another aspect, as was mentioned, is the mature coniferous trees on Fourth Avenue. There was an increased setback that was adjusted in the parcade to allow for greater protection and preservation of those trees on Fourth Avenue. On the south elevation, this would be the lane side or the south aspect of the project. The original application had an exterior garbage enclosure off the lane that has since been relocated, and the garbage enclosure is now contained within the building itself. And what that did is really allow for kind of an opening where some urban agricultural plots could be positioned. So now on the south side of the building, we have a series of garden plots for resident use. Next slide, please. So the west aspect, which would be the Balaclava Street side, some of the improvements here. One is the introduction, the introduction rather, of ground-level entry doors with gates and arbors, as previously discussed. And also during this process, we looked at the parcade structure itself and was able to carve away at the parcade structure, giving greater planting depth or soil above the parcade. And what this really did was allowed us to intensify the landscape and the introduction of more trees along that facade. So really kind of greening this edge up, which was certainly a desirable feature. And just to the right, you know, what previously was sort of a garbage enclosure can now be taken over with garden plots. Next slide, please. On the east elevation, so this would be the elevation adjacent to the Santa Barbara project to the east. And as mentioned, at the ground plane and the parcade ramp coming up to the lane, the introduction and closure of the parcade ramp and really the greening of this facade at the ground level to really try and improve the neighborliness of this facade and, you know, addressing both the visual and the acoustic concerns. So with that, I would just like to hand it over to James Evans. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm James Evans, and I've been, I guess, working on this project now for a couple of years on behalf of the Millers. I really wanted to speak to, I guess, two items in here. I was going to speak to the community consultation, but Carly, our planner, I think, has summarized that pretty well. I just wanted to add to that, that I had number one-on-one meetings with people, both individuals as well as groups, principally over the summer of 2020 and then the fall of 2020 as well, just to listen to their individual concerns and see if there were some things that we could do to potentially address some of those above and beyond some of the items that Carly's already referred to, as well as the architect. When I met in the summer, I met specifically with We Love Kits and the Kits Residents Association, West Kits Residents Association. And one of the items that they, they asked me to see whether or not we could explore potentially looking at a five-story building instead of a six-story building with a, with the ground level partially sunken in ground, which is kind of similar to the other projects that you see immediately surrounding the site, and then dispense with parking to see if that would work. So we did look at that and sort of kicked around a few ideas in that regard, but we were encouraged by staff to stay the course with the project that we had, so we did. And then more recently, I met with them actually in December virtually, and they formulated another idea, which we looked at, which was the notion of a stacked, essentially stacked-type of townhouse form of development at about a two FSR roughly. And that was another interesting proposal, but that proposal would have been a pure rental 100, like a market rental project as opposed to a MRRP project. And I subsequently learned after that that because the site is part of the rental ODP, as Carly mentioned earlier, that it would not be eligible to be redeveloped under the rental 100 program. So really, the MRRP program is the only option that's available for redevelopment of this site. So accordingly, the decision was made to proceed with the proposal that sits in front of you this evening, because it's really the only viable rental option available for this site. The second thing I really want, that I wanted to talk about too, is I, in advance of our hearing this evening, I wanted to see what the rental options were that were available in the immediate neighborhood, not just Kits in general, but specifically around this particular area, because this is an area that's amenity-rich. There's access to the waterfront, to beaches, to parks, to lots of schools. And if you wanted to live in this neighborhood, I wanted to take and see what the options were. Can I ask the clerk to please put up the last slide?
Just wait one second to get the clerks to put that up, as well as on the public screen. Just one second, please. There we go.
That's it. So this is the results of my not terrifically scientific study that I did of essentially one-and-a-half-square-kilometer area immediately surrounding the site. I did a block-by-block tour of the area, essentially extending from Alma Street to the west, the waterfront to the north, Larch Street to the east, and Tenth Avenue to the south. And, you know, through the course of that, I discovered that there were 25 purpose-built rental buildings in the area. Most of the buildings are smaller, containing a dozen or fewer units, and the average age of the buildings in the area is actually 63 years old. In fact, a number of the buildings were built in the 1930s. So according to the BC assessment records for those buildings, I was able to discern that there were 366 rental units on those buildings. And then I looked at the 2016 census data for this particular study area that I was investigating and discovered that there were 6,180 dwellings in the area. So that essentially equates to 5% of the housing stocks, actually purpose-built rental in the neighborhood, which is actually quite surprising to me, given that this is a city where over the half of the residents are tenants. So, you know, I readily acknowledge that there's a number of basement suites, carriage houses, and strata condos available for rental, sorry, for rent in the neighborhood as well, which also comprise some of the rental area, but if, but I might want to, I'd like to point out to council that none of those are actually secure options for tenants. If you're a tenant in the neighborhood and you live in a basement suite, you're at risk of potentially being evicted by the owners, who typically live upstairs, if they decide to boot out their annoying teenagers and send them downstairs, or alternatively, if they have a family member to return to the household. And similarly, rental condos may be sold to purchase... And similarly, rental condos may be sold to purchasers who may be looking to move into them potentially. So there's really not a lot of what I would call secure rental buildings in the neighborhood for tenants, prospective tenants to live in. And even when I take and I look at the stock of existing rental that's in the neighborhood, which you can see there in front of you, they, given the age of most of these buildings, there's a high likelihood that they're probably gonna be redeveloped in the coming years, given that a lot of the buildings are, as I say, that, I actually found, I only found one building that was built after 1986 in the area. So many of those buildings, as I say, are at least 30 years old, in fact, closer to 60. And a lot of them were underbuilt at that time relative to what the current zoning would allow today. So they're all likely candidates for redevelopment. They're gonna gradually disappear over the years. So there, I guess the point really that I'm trying to make here is that, you know, we more, in this particular neighborhood of all places, we desperately need more secure rental buildings. I mean, we need it throughout the entire city, but when you take a look at this neighborhood and you consider that there's only 5% of the existing housing stock is actually secure rental, not even secure rental, they're just existing rental buildings, that really seems like it's quite an inequity. You know, this shouldn't be a neighborhood that's essentially exclusively built for, you know, for people who are fortunate enough to be able to take and own housing. There should be the same range of housing options available for those fortunate enough to be able to take and rent as well, as well as own their homes. So I guess just in summary, I'd like to, you know, you're gonna be hearing from a number of speakers this evening with a diverse range of opinions about this proposal, and I'm hoping that council will keep in mind how severely underserved the rental market is in this local area when they make a decision about the proposal. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the presentation, council. So we're gonna move to questions. I'll just let you know that we have, just gonna give you a couple bits of information here. We have about 60 people signed up to speak to this project. I've been checking with the clerk and the, we're not gonna get through all this tonight, just so you know. So our next meeting will be on February 23rd at 7:00 P.M. And if we don't get through that, we'll move to March 2nd at 6:00 P.M. So I just wanted to let you know, we're at 10 minutes to nine, and I do have one, two, three, four, five, six counselors, which will take about a half an hour, if everybody goes their five minutes. So just all with that in mind, I'll move on to Counselor Boyle for questions to staff or the applicant.
Thanks, Mayor. My questions were actually answered in the presentation, but I couldn't seem to get myself off the list.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Counselor Swanson.
To the applicant, will this be a pet-friendly building?
We haven't made a decision on that yet.
That would be a positive if it were. Also, are you planning on getting any federal or provincial government financing for this project?
We've been exploring the options that are available under the CMHC financing programs, so we likely will. We just, we don't know at this point in time.
Do you know if they have any requirements for affordability?
Well, there's a variety of different programs available under the CMHC, one of which does have an affordability component requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Bly, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. One for the applicant. In terms of options for redevelopment for this site, I hear, I heard through the presentation that there were not options under rental 100 and others, but there would be under the RM4 for strata development. I'm just curious to hear from the applicant, what you've considered in terms of your options if you didn't build rental on the site?
Well, really rental is the only option that we've been exploring on this site. So we haven't actually considered the option of building market strata condos. I mean, that would be the other option for the site. Just build a project with strata condos and obviously retention of the six, or replacement of the six rental units. It would be lost as part of that redevelopment, but that was never really the intent. The intent has always been to take and pursue this as a pure rental project.
Okay, understood. And what is the state of the buildings now? The owners mentioned, or I can't remember, somebody mentioned that they were built in 1934, but has there been any updates or renovations or to bring them sort of in good repair?
Well, the buildings were actually built in the 1940s, and, you know, the maintenance has been done as necessary to the buildings to keep them, you know, keep them in reasonably good shape, but they certainly are at a point in time, a point in their life now where they, something needs to get done to them, which is why this redevelopment proposal is in front of you now.
Okay, and what are the average rents for the existing tenants that live at the site?
Oh, that's a good question. I have to look that up. If you wanna bear with me for a few moments.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of how they compare to the below-market, the eight units in the proposed development.
I think they're pretty comparable.
Okay. Well, I have a question to staff, but if you do find that number, perhaps you can share that before my time is up.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick follow-up question. Thank you very much, Mr. Evans, to staff, and that's regarding the section of the MERC policy that talks about the replacement of three buildings. And it's sort of been a question that I posed, and it strikes me as a difficult one to interpret. And I wonder if staff, I know we've talked about this at the referral part of the process, but it talks about in the policy, buildings with a maximum of three existing rental units. And I'm curious if the plural on buildings is speaking to, that the logical interpretation of this policy is that there are multiple buildings on one site? Or the plural on buildings is actually speaking sort of more generally? So I guess what I'm trying to get to is, it seems very unclear to me in the policy as to whether or not this is presupposing that there'd be multiple buildings on one site or just referring to buildings in general.
Hi, Counselor Bly. Thank you very much for your question. My name's Angel Clark. I'm the housing planner working on this project. And so to answer your question about the MERC policy interpretation regarding the existing number of units. So this site, as you said, does consist of three duplexes that each contain two rental units. So that's total of six existing rental units, three separate buildings. So the MERC program includes a distinction to limit the RM zone sites to redevelop where a building, rather than a development site, has a maximum of three rental units. So this was actually an amendment that was brought forward to council when the MERC program was approved in 2017. And so council's intent at the time was to emphasize protection of the purpose-built rental housing while exploring opportunities for redevelopment of secondary rental options in the RM zoning districts.
So give me an example of where it would protect the purpose-built rental buildings that would have, are we talking about, you know, the very large old homes that have been retrofitted and now have multiple units inside the building, that it protects one of those to a maximum of three rental units?
Just 15 seconds.
So to be considered under the MERC policy, if a site had a building that had more than three rental units in the building, it would not be considered under the MERC policy? So that could be in multiple different forms, but...
So if one building had four units, then it wouldn't be considered?
And we're...
Okay. Yes, I get it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Hardwick, up to five.
Great, thank you. My questions, I'd like to start with Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans, I understand that you've had discussions and also Mr. Miller with the folks in the neighborhood. And I understand originally you'd thought that an increase from 1.45 FSR to 2.0 FSR would be needed to make the alternative here financially viable. Briefly, how did you arrive at this figure?
Well, it wasn't very scientific, and quite frankly, we didn't get very far on it. It was made under the assumption that we could proceed forward with something under the rental 100 program, which I subsequently discovered was not the case. And it just looked at the project as being a pure market rental project, so no affordable housing component. So we started to look at it. We kicked around a few ideas. I sort of worked backwards to see where you would need to be to kind of end up being financially indifferent on the project, and then I didn't really take it any further because I discovered it wasn't viable option for us.
Thank you. So I understand there's been two different architects and two different development consultants on this project. How did that lay out? Can you explain, please?
Well, the previous, the person who was the consultant who was assisting with this ended up leaving to go and take on another job. And I was asked to come in and take on, or, you know, take over for him, which I've agreed to do. And then there was a decision made partway through the project to sort of, there was a decision made to change the architect because, quite frankly, the plans that we've got right now, we thought were a better response to the site that we had, that we were working with.
Okay. I was wondering if you could shed some light on the economics of this site to help me understand the value of the city subsidies for DCLs and CACs?
In what respect?
Well, I see the site is assessed at 4.5 million in an RM4 zone at a maximum of 1.45 FSR. So if the FSR is doubled as proposed, what is the approximate worth of the site as one strata or two secured rental?
It's really just about the same thing. By the time you've secured the eight units for long-term rental at below-market rental values and you've paid for the cost of construction, plus all the improvements adjacent to the site, it really doesn't make any difference to the value of the site at all.
But the original part of that question was around the city subsidies for DCLs and CACs?
Yeah, well, I took that into account when I evaluated it. So it's, as I say, it really is, it's pretty much indifferent, and the only waiver that's available now is the DCL waiver, the utility DCL will be paid on this project.
I was looking through the graphics boards that are on the city's website and the public hearing materials, and I noticed that there's no design rationale included in these panels. A design rationale would usually address neighborhood fit, character, height of buildings in the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera. Why was there no design rationale provided? The staff report, for example, states on page seven that this proposal is compatible with the RM4 guidelines. So I'm trying to get some context for that.
Okay, maybe I'll let the project architect speak to that. Mark, can you speak to that?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure thing. And I think it goes back to our presentation at Urban Design Panel, and I apologize if there's no design rationale submitted along with the rezoning package. But what we presented at the Urban Design Panel and I think got alignment with the panel there, and I think Carly touched on it as well, is looking at the Kitsellano neighborhood and specifically Fourth Avenue and the character of buildings that are present along that street. And I think it was said quite well that the only consistent thing is the diversity, where you have buildings of all types of styles. You know, I think a case in point is immediately adjacent to our project, you have a Spanish-style project. And, you know, along the same street, you have everything from kind of more contemporary to craftsman, to arts and crafts, to art deco. So there is a real, there is a real diversity of building styles. But regardless, you know, when we're looking at the architecture of the building, we obviously want to make sure we're fitting from both sort of a scale and character perspective. So the setting back of the six-story, using cladding materials that sort of bring texture, using the balconies and the elevations of the building, how sort of the offsetting of windows and balconies to create that texture and that sense of human scale.
For your time, but thank you very much for your...
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Thanks. I'm gonna be brief because Counselor Bly actually touched on my questions with respect to the clarification on the replacement units in the different buildings, and also on, if not this project, what? So I just wanna follow up on that quickly, because I always like to ask this question. If this project is not approved, what are the other options for the site? And I understood your answer very clear. This is to the applicant, that you don't qualify for rental 100, the other project. But just to be explicitly clear, if this application wasn't approved and it wasn't rental, then your options would be either strata condo, townhouse, single-family home. Is that correct?
Counselor Kirby Young, it would likely be very similar to what you see immediately across the street and beside it. It would be a four-story condo building with market housing and some rental replacement. That's the only other option for the site. But it would be, you know, unfortunate because you'd lose an opportunity to provide, as I say, 35 replacement rental units in a neighborhood that desperately needs it.
Okay, and then just one quick follow-up on the two different options that you said the community had brought forward. And the first one, which was five levels, I think you said, without parking, which could create other issues in a sunken level. And you said staff encourage you to proceed. Do you have an opinion on livability with having a sunken bottom level?
I don't really know what to say to that. I mean, it's something that's well-understood in the area because the other buildings have it right now. Personally, I think that everybody should have the ability to take and live at grade rather than live in a sunken area, but that's just my opinion.
Yep, no, that's fair enough. I appreciate that. Okay, I'll leave it there for time. I'm gonna save questions first half for our next opportunity.
Thanks so much. Okay, Counselor Dominado, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And yes, just a couple of questions to the applicant, and I don't know if Mr. Evans or if the Millers wanna answer this question, but I wanted to drill down to the comment that you learned about the MERC program back in 2017. And it's been clearly established that the alternative is potentially strata development, but what was the motivation in undertaking, making an application under the MERC program? And maybe the Millers could speak to that, but I'll leave it to you to decide, whether it's Mr. Evans or the Millers. What was the motivation of pursuing something under the MERC program?
I'll speak briefly. We started eight years ago presenting different options for a purpose-built rental building on that site. That was our objective, a purpose-built rental building on that site. And we kept putting alternatives to staff, and for one reason or another, they were always turned down. And eventually, one of the staff members suggested to us in late 2017 of the Modern Income Rental Housing Program, pilot program, and would we like to come and attend to the introductory meeting? We went, we made an application. The application was accepted as part of the pilot program, one of the 20 pilot programs. And here we are, because from our point of view, it offered a purpose-built rental building on that site. And that was our basic objective.
Thank you. That clarified some things for me. It sounds like you're very passionate about delivering that rental option within the city, is what I'm hearing, and that this was an avenue to do that. And then my last question is with respect to, maybe to Mr. Evans. We've received a lot of correspondence, and I think we'll hear from a number of speakers. You indicated, and in the correspondence, we've heard from individuals, that there was another potential proposal. You talked, you obviously sat down and met with others, and they, you know, there was different designs contemplated. But what we're seeing today and what's at the public hearing is, there is no alternative proposal to be tabled. This was what you intended. Is that correct?
Yes, Counselor Dominado, sorry, that's correct. We, as you say, I explored a number of options over the course of the past year, you know, in an effort to try and reach out to the community and see if we could come to a meeting in the minds on something. But at the end of the day, this was the only viable option that had policy support from the city. And so really, it's the only door that we could take and go through. So this is the only proposal that's been put forward right now for consideration.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Evans. That helps. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks so much. Counselor Hardwick, I see you on the list, but you have your five minutes.
I understand. I'm just asking you, Mr. Mayor, will there be other opportunities for questions to staff?
Oh, absolutely. After we hear from... After we hear from, just like every public hearing, after we hear from the public, there is another round of, of questions to staff.
And what, and what about the applicant?
No, this is it for the applicant, this section.
Well, too bad I'm out of time. I'll have to work it in. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, counsel, that's it for, for questions this round anyway from counsel and the, for the applicant. So now we're going to go hear from the public. And if you want to participate in this, it's 1-833-353-8610-93417 pound to get on the list. Counsel, we're at 10 after nine at the moment. So just to keep that in mind. And we're going to move to our first speaker, who is Mary Down. Mary Down on the line?
Hello?
Hi there. If you're Mary Down, you have up to five minutes to address counsel. Please go ahead whenever you like.
Okay, Mayor and counsel, I'm Mary Down from Vancouver. I oppose the rezoning to allow the construction of this six-story building under the MERP program. The project should never have been considered because it does not meet the criteria laid out in the MERP policy. The site has six existing rental units and 13 tenants that will be displaced. MERP policy clearly states that only sites with three rental units or less should be considered. The six existing units, all of them with three bedrooms, rent for 1,700 a month, much below the rents of the eight proposed moderate income rental units. Neither does the proposed building achieve the MERP objectives to consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes, and that neighborhood context is an important consideration. The unattractive box design does not fit with the existing traditional and historic character of the neighborhood. The bad fit of the building is evident by the strong community opposition to the rezoning by residents of the surrounding area. There are more than 638 residents, many of them renters, in opposition. The 3,000, 2,900 block of West Fifth is an almost complete block of craftsmen-style California bungalows built during the 1920s, which have a Heritage B designation, acknowledging the house's architectural merit and historical interest. The houses grow out of the arts and crafts movement, which represented beautiful but simple design made by skilled craftsmen using local materials that would be affordable for the common people. The arts and crafts movement, which originated in mid-19th century England, was a direct reaction against the mass production and ugliness of the Industrial Revolution. The proposed building is overwhelmingly in conflict with the streetscape. There are no buildings higher than four stories along this section of Fourth Avenue, and the nearby adjacent RM4 developments are three and a half stories, 35 feet. There is certainly a need for affordable rentals in Vancouver, but is the MERP program introduced by Vision really the way to achieve it? The disillusionment with Vision and the results of the last civic election were a message that Vancouver voters wanted to change. And yet, here we are with the Vision-appointed senior staff continuing to drive city policy. What might be a better way than MERP to achieve more affordable rental accommodation? Perhaps the city planners could stop torturing, and I do not use that word lightly, homeowners who want to add another rental unit in their homes. A number of residents in the area have had to jump through amazing hoops to add a rental unit. One example is the house on West Fifth, just behind the proposed building. They made an application to raise their house and add two basement suites. They could only raise the house 12 inches because it could not be higher, even by one inch than the neighboring house. And yet, the proposed apartment building in their backyard, if rezoned, will allow an extra two stories, 28 feet. The reasons why they could add only one apartment and not two seem nonsensical. In recent articles by Frances Bule in The Globe about her family's five-year struggle to build a laneway house, she says, "You never know when city policy is going to change and throw a wrench into your plans."
Speaker, if I could just, if I could just direct you back to this particular project, despite, by law, we're bound to...
Yes, I am, I am, I, excuse me, I am, I'm getting there. I, I, thank you. If the city made the permit process somewhat less onerous, there could easily be at least eight rental units built in the surrounding two blocks, with happier, more engaged renters living in larger, less expensive apartments, many of them with garden access that could be achieved instead of using this MERP building. In speaking to many of my neighbors, I encountered a shocking and dismaying level of cynicism and mistrust of City Hall and its complete disregard for feedback from local residents. The zoning rules we have in place were established for good reasons. Each time the city planners break that covenant with spot zoning, it results in further cynicism and distrust among residents. The needs of developers are prioritized over the livability of our neighborhoods. What do we gain with the MERP rezoning? Eight units of ostensibly affordable rental housing at a much higher rent per square foot than the existing rentals. The community amenity costs of $300,000 for sewer, water, and infrastructure to accommodate the increased density will be waived under MERP, and those costs will instead be borne by Vancouver taxpayers.
Just 10 seconds.
The math doesn't add up. If the rezoning goes through yet again, a developer wins and Vancouver residents lose. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, and I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move on to the next speaker, counsel. The next speaker is Davis Osterberry.
Hi there.
Hi there. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight in support of the rezoning application for West Fourth and Balaklava. My name is Davis Osterberry, and I'm a Kitsellano business owner, and I'm greatly interested in what happens in this neighborhood. I've spoken to council and support of other rental housing projects before, and I support this one too because we need more homes for people who work and support our community. This development will provide 35 new rental homes along a major bus route and pedestrian corridor close to school and services, and this is exactly the sort of project that should be built here. I also love the project will have more homes for those with moderate incomes. As an employer, this will really help with recruiting and maintaining permanent employees in the community, because this is very hard at the moment with, you know, merely basement suites available. I would hope that you agree with me when I say that local businesses are just as important when it comes to creating and enhancing a neighborhood's character. In order to support local businesses, we need a diversity in housing, and this project is one small step to helping provide that. Thank you for your time this evening. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to hearing your comments and decision. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you from council, so I am going to thank you for participating tonight and move on to the next speaker. Counsel, the next speaker is Jane McFadden.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and counselors.
Hi there.
My name is Jane Mc, and I am the executive director of the Kitsellano West Fourth Avenue Business Association, and I am a resident of Vancouver. I'm calling in today to advocate for the approval of the rezoning application since it would provide secure rental housing, including moderate income rates, on a site that has so much potential because of its location to transit, childcare, community center, and of course, our local business community. Since 2001, the Kitsellano Business Association has been responsible for marketing, promoting, beautifying, and advancing a thriving, sustainable business district for the residents, yes, and the 290 business members and more than 150 commercial property owners. We've been voted Vancouver's best neighborhood for more than seven years in a row by the readers of the Georgia Strait, as well as the neighborhood that best represents Vancouver. We are very proud and passionate about the Kitsellano community. Unfortunately, Kits is at risk of losing its charm if we don't start addressing the housing issues that our community faces. How can we be the neighborhood that best represents Vancouver when we desperately need rental housing, when we have so little purpose-built renting housing available? In my experience, I can say that the majority of the people who work in the stores and restaurants on West Fourth live in rental housing, but unfortunately, they have to commute from elsewhere to do so. Alternatively, many of the people who shop in the stores and eat in the restaurants also have to commute to do so. This has been vastly apparent through the COVID pandemic and why many of our businesses at this moment are struggling to see what their future looks like in Kitsellano. In speaking with the businesses on West Fourth regarding this application and this development, of course, they would like to see more of residents like this building in the future and this one in particular. The project before you today is exactly the sort of project we need to see built, high-quality, secured, modest, density rental apartments. This project also has the added benefit of eight moderate-income homes, which no doubt will be of interest to many in the area. This is the perfect opportunity to maximize housing on this site with a project that will benefit our community and local businesses of West Fourth Avenue. Thank you, counsel, for hearing my perspective, and I hope to see this project come to fruition in our area.
Thanks so much. You do have a question from Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Hardwick, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. McFadden. As a fellow Kitsellano resident, you're interested in more people living in the area. Does it matter to you what the housing form is as long as the customer base is growing?
Of course not. I mean, I think we're going to hopefully see a variety. I know that there's talk of a few developments within our BIA area that will, that will happen, and we've seen another development approved at Fourth New that looks different than what we expect, but it's a high street in Vancouver, and I think the need for more density is, is clear. I don't think the building is, is terrible-looking, so that's just my opinion. But as far as do we care what it looks like? Of course we do. I mean, our businesses work hard to make the neighborhood, and, and the business association works very hard to make the neighborhood look appealing for visitors. So yes, it is important, and density is important as well.
I said housing form, actually. But the key, the key thing is, is to keep the customer base increasing, and, and I understand your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any other counselors on the queue to ask you questions, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have got, sorry, counsel. Speaker number four is Michael Mortensen.
Hello, Mayor and counsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Very good. Thank you very much for, for, for hearing me and my support for this application. I, I'm, I'm a really big advocate of moderate income rental, the pilot. I'm an urban planner and a development consultant, working in Vancouver for the last 31 years, living in Vancouver for the last 31 years. And as part of my life in the city, I have lived in Kits, close by to here in my early days as a UDC student, so I know the area pretty intimately. I met the, the applicant, Mr. Miller, when I returned to Vancouver after working in London for some time. And, and I met him at a, at a housing conference in 2016 in the fall, and it was specifically an innovation conference, looking targeted to Vancouver. And, you know, I'd like to ask counsel to think of where they were four to five years ago. And Mr. Miller's been working on this application for more than eight years, trying to find a suitable rental path of development. I put a kid through high school in less time, in, in the time that Peter Miller has been trying to find a rental housing solution for his site. I, I think it's appalling that it's taken this long, frankly, for someone who's so committed, who's put so much of his time and effort into creating rental housing for the last 40-plus years. And I think this is frankly, a completely appropriate form of development for a high-street location, an arterial road location. You know, people say that Vancouver shouldn't be a high-rise city. We should be more like, more like Europe. Well, frankly, this is a six-story, a six-story form of development that you see in, in most places in Europe. It's a completely acceptable form of development for an arterial location. It will provide, you know, six times more rental housing that's currently on the site, eight units that are going to be significantly affordable for the life of the building. So I would commend counsel to support this application. It's an elegant form of development. It fits a high-street location, an arterial location, and I think the, I, I really commend Mr. Miller for his patience. I think he's doing a good thing for Vancouver. He's going to be providing affordable housing for people living and working in Vancouver and increasing the stock of rental housing. So, you know, I strongly, strongly endorse this project and recommend that counsel prove it.
Thanks so much for calling in. I don't see any questions for you. And I'm just going to move on to the next, the next speaker. We have...
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Cameron Zubko next. Hi, you're a little faint.
Okay. Any better?
I, I am here, but it sounds like you might be on a cell phone. That's, that's, the reception's a little weak.
Oh.
Sorry, you are quite faint, I have to say.
On mute. Hi, is this any, is this any better?
It is a lot better, yes. Please go ahead.
Oh, a lot better. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. And I'm here with, I'm, I'm here with the group, so there's two with me, and I believe that with two with me, that's a consideration, so just bringing that up.
That is, you have up to eight minutes.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And sorry, sorry, we just need to identify the two people that are with you, and then it's a bit awkward in COVID times, but just any kind of verbal indication of names would be great.
I'll pass that over. Please identify yourself.
Jill Davies.
And you?
Chris Davies.
Great, thanks very much. Perfect. So you have up to eight minutes. Please go ahead, Mr. Zubko.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience. Hello, Mayor and counsel. My name is Cameron Zubko. I am a resident of Vancouver. I am a member of the Métis Nation of British Columbia and a former member of the city's Urban Indigenous Peoples Advisory Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm the neighbor directly to the south of the proposed building. I'm also here today on behalf of We Love Kits, which is a community organization that represents a group of renters and town, and homeowners in the Kitsellano area who are in opposition to this project. We note that the community has provided almost 800 individual pieces of correspondence in opposition to this project to council, which I think shows a very clear community opposition to what is being proposed. Before I begin, I'd like to draw counsel's attention to their hearing package, where we've provided a letter, a presentation, and an arborist's report for your consideration. So I'd like to start off by clearing up a misconception about what it is that we want at We Love Kits and what the neighborhood wants. We are not against density. In fact, if any of the speakers here who support the project are speaking in support of density, then we're quite aligned with you, and we're actually saying the same thing. We also want density at this location. What we're really against is bad design and inefficient design, which I think what this building offers and why we think it's the wrong fit. That's one of the major flaws and issues we have with this building and why we're proposing an alternate form of development, which we call the Balaklava option. The Balaklava option is a stacked apartment and townhome-style building with four above-ground stories and with room for adequate setbacks and greenery. And with the Balaklava option, we can get the developer 87% of the rentable square feet that they're requesting under this application simply by removing some of the inefficiencies of the building that they're proposing. So let's talk a little bit about some of our issues with the application and why we believe it deserves to be rejected today. Our primary issue is that this application does not meet the MERP policy guidelines for RM zones. We brought this issue to the attention of council at the referral report stage on January 20th. I refer specifically to Section 3G, which specifies that a site with more than three existing rental units is not eligible for the MERP program. This site has six existing rental units on it. I know there's been a memo by staff recently where they make an argument. Respectfully, we feel that staff have provided a very narrow view of the policy and not consistent with the intent of the policy itself. The policy seeks to reconsider redevelopment on underutilized sites, sites being the operative word, not buildings. Individual buildings are not the focus of the policy. If individual buildings were the focus, the policy would not have used the term site. It would have used parcel or lot, which is more appropriate. The policy writers were clearly talking about sites for redevelopment. So now, while I may agree that the site could be better utilized, in the case of this rezoning application, this is one site, and it happens to have six units on it, which in our view makes the site not compliant with the MERP policy. We hope that staff can take a broader view and, and take into consideration the intent of the MERP policy in their interpretation. So based on this fact alone, we believe counsel should reject this application. So, based on this fact alone, we believe council should reject this application. Now, that said, this is not the only MRRP policy guideline that the project fails. There are two others. Number one, the MRRP policy guideline specifies that neighborhood context is an important consideration. So, we looked at the site context provided by the applicant, and we see a lot of four-story buildings along Fourth Avenue and no six-story buildings, nowhere, anywhere. The applicant has not demonstrated any neighborhood context for a building of this size. In terms of design, the proposed building is an unimaginative box design that disrespects the streetscape, design, and character of the neighborhood. Why did they choose that design when the site is adjacent to a Heritage B area along Fifth Avenue and among pleasant-scale, well-designed RM4 apartment buildings? Certainly, UDP recommended all kinds of design improvement, and the applicant did not make any material change based on community feedback. So, based on these factors, they haven't shown neighborhood context, and this in our mind is a failure to meet the criteria laid out by MRRP, and another reason this application should be rejected. Also, the MRRP policy specifies that any MRRP project should respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes. However, this is another area where this project fails to deliver. Specifically, there's no attempt to transition, and I can say that as the neighbor to the south. Substantially, all of the other buildings in the RM zone have made an attempt to step down and create a line of trees or somehow transition from a large building form to residential housing. This building as proposed has made no such attempt. The three-foot sec-back relaxation requested by the applicant on the south side is not supportable, as it does not provide sufficient room for green space, for transition, and leads to an unneighborly and oversized building with problems of overlooking and privacy that simply do not withstand the test of equity for the neighborhood. So, we have a failure here, too, to meet MRRP guidelines and a failure to respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes. I would also like to draw your attention to an arborist's report prepared by Davy Tree, which shows that a building of this size will jeopardize the three existing mature-seeded trees on the property, huge old-growth trees, forty-nine feet in height. We believe that staff have not provided any certainty in their own report that retaining these trees is even feasible. Mayor and council, in turning down this application, I don't want you to think of it as voting against secured market rental. Rather, you will be voting for a more neighborly project, the Balaklava option, which will provide eighty-seven percent of the same rentable square footage and a project that can be replicated throughout the city. On behalf of We Love Kits, I make the commitment to you councillors tonight that if you turn down this rezoning application, that we will be back at the table with the developer immediately and back here as soon as possible to jointly present to you the Balaklava option in a fashion that meets the goal of the developer, the city, and the community, and with a project that Mr. Miller can be proud of. In closing, we provided the council with a motion, which we'd like you to consider tonight. If I may read the motion, it is that council, number one, reject CD1 rezoning as proposed for 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street. Number two, request staff to work with the community and the applicant to develop a more innovative, secured rental housing form, which achieves higher building efficiency and achieves a minimum of approximately two FSR, and respects neighborhood character and livability. And number three, request staff to endeavor to make up time lost for this instruction in the related development review and approval process for the alternative housing form. Thank you very much for your time, Mayor and council.
Thank you. And you do have a couple of questions. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Zubko. I'm interested in learning more about other solutions here. Mr. Evans, when we heard the applicant's commentary earlier, briefly explained that there had been collaboration with the community, and I believe you've already touched on that as well. Were you involved in this collaboration, and do you have anything to add about the collaboration in addition to what we heard from James Evans? When, for example, when and how did this begin, and how... Could you give us a timeline? I know we've heard this has taken, unfortunately, what was it, eight years since Mr. Miller started looking at this process? So, when did this potential collaboration begin? Could you answer that first?
Yes, well, eight years is not my experience. The application went into the city in January of 2020. I can tell you from our perspective that it hasn't been easy. It's been very hard to get the attention of the city and of the applicant throughout this process. The developer didn't agree to meet with us until July 2020. I mean, since then, our relationship has improved, but certainly for the first half of 2020, we had a lot of trouble getting anyone to agree to have a real conversation with us. We finally had to appeal to the planning department, who intervened to arrange a meeting with the developer, who had, up until that point, declined to meet with us. So, we finally got our meeting with Mr. Evans at the end of July 2020, and actually, once he agreed to meet us, I think he saw that we were genuinely trying to come up with workable solutions. We proposed some ideas right away, and I believe Mr. Evans took those to the Millers and to the city. But after that, we waited, and we waited, and we sent emails to see what was happening. And it wasn't until late November that we were informed that staff was not really receptive to new ideas for their proposal, which was a major disappointment, since both the neighborhood and the developer were working so well together. So, we took the initiative again, and we brought in an urban designer named Scott Hine to build a specific proposal that we could develop along with Mr. Evans, which became the Balaklava option, and we had our kickoff meeting not very long ago, on December fifteenth.
So, in all of this, were you able to discuss your concerns with staff?
Yes, we were able to meet with staff. It was... In many ways, staff did provide us an opportunity to provide input. However, where the frustration was is it was not a two-way conversation. It was a one-way conversation. So, we had a hard time with that, as it didn't seem to us like we were being heard. So, we had to work very hard in that regard.
And yet, you still think there's potential to collaborate going forward?
Absolutely.
One of the things I heard in Mr. Evans' remarks was about Kitsellano generally and the understanding what current zoning would allow. What, in your view, would current zoning allow in terms of the number of units that could still make sense financially on this piece of land?
Well, our understanding is that a 2.0 FSR would be a workable project, and that's what we have proposed. I mean, simply put, our proposal, the Balaklava option, is a more efficient design for the site. So, what do we mean when we're talking about efficiency? Well, the reason that six stories are so inefficient is because the building design is the wrong jumping-off point. The design is meant for a much larger location, and someone has tried to shrink it down and make it fit in basically in what is two thirty-three-foot-wide lots. So, they jammed this building in a too-small lot, and much of the space inside gets wasted on things like elevators and stairs and so on that might be suitable for a larger building but are not suitable for a smaller building if it wants to stay efficient. So, as I said before, we didn't come to the Balaklava option on our own. We worked with a prominent urban designer, Scott Hine, who acted as a broker of sorts between us and the developer. And Mr. Hine worked with the developer, and came up with a 2.0 FSR number that all parties indicated would work. So, that's how we came up with it. In fact, we were quite close to a lot more productive conclusion until this hearing came along. The owner, Mr. Miller, I recognize...
Thanks for just...
Okay.
But you do have another question from councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young, go ahead. Yep, thank you, councillor Hardwick.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief, and I just want to ask a clarifying question, Mr. Zubko. You said that you're... I think your phrasing was you're not against density, but you are against bad design. And I just want to clarify that oftentimes, when there's strong opposition to project, like in this case, it's usually because of height. Are you more... Do you have a concern about the proposed height specifically, that you think it's too tall, or is it more the actual design of the building?
I think the issue is partly due to the inefficiencies of the building design itself. I think what happens is that if the wrong building is proposed, with an inappropriate FSR, it leads to symptoms of all of these other issues. So, ultimately, I think that with a reduced FSR, all those other issues are gonna go away. And with an improved efficiency, you know, we have... We can still get the developer what he wants for the site.
Okay, but just to be clear, a reduced FSR would mean a shorter building? Is that...
That's correct, but it's... What I'm saying is it's the cart before the horse, so to speak. With a reduced FSR, all these other issues go away. So, the setbacks, issues will become less of an issue, the height will become less of an issue, all the other issues that we brought up, I think are symptomatic of an inappropriate building size and bulk and FSR for the location.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll leave it there. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming to speak.
Thank you, too.
Councillor Ween, up to five minutes for questions.
Sorry. Thanks for coming to speak. We did hear today of some changes, and I'm wondering what your group thinks of some of those changes, including moving the garbage inside to create planter boxes, to create food assets in the back, the retention of the three trees, new street trees along Balaklava. So, and also changes in the design that are to be moved forward into the next phases. And I'm just wondering how you feel about those, and were any of those brought forward by your group?
Yes, most certainly, these were brought forward by our group. We spoke to everybody in the neighborhood, everyone in... Everyone we could. We were on every doorstep. So, we've drawn from a very wide and very deep pool of knowledge to come before you today, and our comments and our suggestions are the product of conversations with our community, with input and guidance from our steering committee, who's also made up of community leaders and former city planners and designers and architects. So, we really have gathered feedback from the wider neighborhood. In terms of the issues, yes, we brought them forward to planning a number of times. We brought them forward to the developer, Mr. Evans. So, they're very well aware of our issues. In fact, originally, we just brought them issues and looked to them for solutions, but in November, December, in proposing the Balaklava option, we decided we weren't getting anywhere with that, so we would get proactive and actually develop our own option, and that's what we put on the table for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. That's it for questions. So, I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Thanks for your presentation today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're gonna move on to Claire Anne Lidstone, speaker number six. Claire Anne Lidstone?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm hearing that Claire Anne Lidstone was on the line but has disconnected.
Okay, thanks. How about Shaughnessy Luke, speaker number seven? Shaughnessy Luke?
I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Shaughnessy Luke, and I would like to share my support for the rezoning application at 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street. There are a few reasons why I support this project. Firstly, I'm a Kits resident, so I know from personal experience how difficult it can be to find secure housing in this neighborhood. It is particularly difficult for families or young people to find suitable housing. Many rely on the rental market to be able to live in Vancouver, so we need new rental housing to provide more options for people. Secondly, this project is also part of the MRRP program, which provides affordable housing for people with moderate household incomes. This would greatly benefit many families like my own in the area who otherwise would not be able to afford to live here. I hope that my children will be able to grow up and remain in Kitsellano. The only way this will happen is if we continue to build housing diversity and choice. I'm very happy to support this project, and I will look forward to many more like it. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I don't see any council on the list for questions for you, so I'll just thank you for your comments this evening and move to the next speaker. Let's see, council, we've got Larry Yatkowski.
Hello.
Speaker...
Hello.
Hi there. Thanks for calling in this evening. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Mayor Stewart, council members in attendance, and of course, staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak in support of the proposed CD1 rezoning at 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava. My name is Larry Yatkowski and a member of reference. Twenty-twenty-one is my thirty-second year as a Kitsellano homeowner. Before I begin, I wish to note that the West Kitsellano Residents' Association and the We Love Kits group do not represent mine and possibly many others' view in this matter. As a longtime resident of Kitsellano, it is my opinion that more rental housing in this neighborhood is needed. This proposed project, while not pleasing to all, is ultimately a viable and proper outcome befitting council's moderate-income rental housing program. I have visited the site on the corner lot of West Fourth and Balaklava. It's, in my view, severely underutilized. In its current state, the property does not fulfill the fundamental land value... Sorry, land mandate of highest and best use, and as such, it underserves our community. I am convinced that the proposal will work as the intent serves the goal of the softened rental housing need across the city. Well-considered projects such as this offer modest, measured, and appropriate density in order to provide close access to transit and community services. Of note, this proposal incorporates homes for families with moderate incomes. In keeping, that feature provides opportunity to share with families all things Kitsellano. Doing so will add their footprints to the vibrancy of this special place I call home. I view the proposal as a huge win for all concerned, and to summarize, I support the rezoning and proposed application. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for calling in, and I don't see anybody on the list to ask you questions, so just thank you so much for participating this evening. Council, our next speaker, and we're coming up to just quarter to ten, is Timothy Ankenman, speaker number nine, Timothy Ankenman.
Thank you, your worship. And council, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Fantastic. My name is Tim Ankenman. I speak as a business owner very nearby this site. I am an architect and run about a thirty-five-man firm down on Barre and near Barre and Fourth Avenue. I am losing staff at a remarkable rate, because they're basically going out to the valley, out to Surrey, Abbotsford, other municipalities like that, just because of the affordability issue. So, to be able to have more rental projects that are sort of within walking distance and certainly just along one bus line to my business would be absolutely amazing for us. It's an ongoing struggle for us to try and compete with wages, because really, if you're in Surrey, if you're in Vancouver, if you're in Barre, it doesn't really matter. We sort of have to, in order to be competitive, we basically have to charge the same fees as anybody else does, yet for our workers, and it's right within that median in terms of the affordable housing, thirty thousand, eighty thousand dollars is roughly what we pay average our normal employees. And so, to have that availability within a very close proximity to our offices would be fantastic. I am obviously in no way involved with the architecture of this project, but I'm just speaking to strongly support the project. I think that the staff recommendations and the design development improvements will go a long way in terms of appeasing the general public and the fine-tuning of the site as it can go along, but I highly recommend that council this project be approved.
Thank you so much for your contribution this evening. There are no questions from council, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. We have Simon Jacobs, who's speaker number ten.
Hello, Mayor Kennedy, councillors. My name is Simon Jacobs. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm against the rezoning recommendation. My wife and I are long-term residents of Kitsellano. We've been here for thirty years as renters and owners. We have one of those arts and crafts houses on West Fifth near the proposal site that we're slowly restoring. Our lot is about a hundred feet from the site to the southwest, so this is very real for us. When we were buying our house fifteen years ago, it was pretty obvious that those apartments at the site would be replaced. They were in a... at the site would be replaced. They were in a, a reasonable state of disrepair even then. So of course, we did our diligence and, uh, and determined it was RM four zoning and assumed that ultimately they'd be replaced, they'd be replaced by something sympathetic with that stretch of, uh, of Fourth Avenue, which was largely, uh, three and a half stories with a half low ground and the occasional four stories. And that's, I guess, my main, main issue here. Um, there are a lot of other issues that, um, that have been discussed, and they're all, they're all, they're all germane to this, but for me, the, the problem is this is a monolith of a building. Um, it, it's imposing, it consumes almost all of its lot, it's nearly double the height of the underlying RM four zoning and the other buildings around. There's simply nothing like it nearby. Um, the, the stretch of road on which it sits on Fourth, well, Fourth is a very, uh, is an arterial, that stretch is residential. There's no businesses in a three-block stretch. Um, and in fact, when you look at the height of buildings, you can go all the way from, uh, Alma up to Vine, and there's nothing over Four. Um, so this building is going to be profoundly, um, out of proportion with everything else that's, that's around it. Um, it's gonna loom over the neighborhood, right? It, and part of it is the size, height, but the other part is, is the design. I think, uh, Cameron spoke to, to how these are related, but, um, you, you know, what, um, what we have here is, is frankly just a six-story box. There's been no, no attempt to be consistent with the character of this neighborhood, and I go further, I mean, not even to, to be mildly sympathetic. There's really been no consideration, um, at all. Um, so those are, that's sort of my main concerns. Uh, I'm also concerned about the precedent this is gonna set. Um, there are, uh, other possibilities like this in, in the neighborhood, and, um, and I think we need to be careful, um, where we see this neighborhood going. Um, I wanna be clear that, uh, you know, my wife and I, we embrace increased density here. Uh, I actually think we need it, um, and certainly, uh, embrace the, the notion of rental accommodation. We knew that that was rental when we bought here and, and expected it to continue to be that way. I think all we're asking is that we try a little harder to find something that, that makes more sense for this, this neighborhood, uh, and something that's gonna get a little bit of more buy-in from, from those who are living very close to it. Um, I, uh, strongly support, uh, the Balaklava option that Cameron, um, Zuko mentioned earlier. Uh, I encourage, uh, council to, to, uh, delay, um, uh, the consideration of this vote and, and really just give, uh, that, the two groups, uh, time to, uh, to explore an option that's gonna be more, um, uh, that's gonna have a, a greater buy-in within the neighborhood. It's gonna be a win-win all around. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any questions for you, uh, so, uh, thank you so much for participating this evening. Uh, council, we probably have time for just one more speaker, uh, and that would be Sabrina Sutherland, speaker number, um, eleven. Sabrina Sutherland?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. I understand that Sabrina Sutherland is not on the line.
How about Nathan Hawke, speaker number, Hawkins, sorry, number twelve, speaker number twelve?
The clerk here again, and I understand that, uh, Nathan Hawkins is also not on the line.
Thanks. We can move to speaker number thirteen, Sarah D. Hanson.
The clerk again, and, um, again...
How about number fourteen, Rob, uh, Sawatsky?
Yes, I understand. That speaker is on the line.
Great. Mr. Sawatsky, please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak. I'd just like to say that, uh, I am a member of, uh, the Kitselano community. My wife and I have been here for six years, and one of the reasons we moved to this area was, uh, the feel of the neighborhood, the way the neighborhood was, uh, diverse and planned, and, um, I'm not a city planner, and I don't know, uh, all the different zonings, but I do agree with the West Kits Residents Association and, uh, We Love Kits. I think, um, the argument that they're making is something that my wife and I support, and I guess to use, uh, somewhat of a slang term, you can put as much lipstick as you want on a pig, but it's still a pig, and I think the, uh, building design is, uh, too tall, uh, too large a mass, and I think the Balaklava option is, uh, something that's more palatable, uh, to many people on the block I live on, Third Avenue, uh, very close to where that development is going to be. I'm at Third Balaklava. Um, I'm not against, um, increased density, uh, in the community. Uh, my wife and I actually have moved into a heritage home that, uh, was initially a single-family home and now, uh, houses three families, and I do support having, uh, rental, uh, options available, and, uh, uh, I think the proposal made by Cameron, uh, is something that's viable, and I'd be interested in knowing, uh, what the opposition is to the proposal that, uh, Cameron has put forward. Uh, and I guess that will pretty much round off what I, I have to say.
Thank you so much. I don't see any, uh, councillors on the list, uh, and, uh, just wanted to thank you for your participation tonight. Uh, council, that brings us to the end of, uh, what we can accomplish this evening before ten o'clock. We just have four minutes left, and that's not enough time to afford a speaker a full, um, uh, the full use of the five minutes. So, um, let's see here. Uh, clerks, can you remind me when we'd be, uh, coming back? It'd be next, next Tuesday, I think it's seven?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, the, um, date for reconvening is February twenty-third at seven PM.
Great. Okay. So, uh, uh, council, thanks so much for your work this evening, and we're gonna just need a motion to recess.
Motion to recess. So moved.
Thank you. Uh, I heard councillor, uh, Hardwick first, councillor Dominado second, uh, all in favor say yay?
Yay.
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 Opposed, nay? Great. Thanks so much, council. Okay, heard that last one. Um, so, uh, that's great. So we're, um, we're recessed for this evening. Anything else, clerks? Oh, and just a reminder, council, that we are in the middle of this hearing, so please, uh, no speaking to, uh, folks, um, about this, uh, because everything that's said at this point until we reach debate and decision has to be public, so everyone gets to hear everything about this project, so I'll just make that reminder. Okay. Thanks so much, and, uh, we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, all. Thanks, Tash.